We have very hot mics. If you didn't hear me, you probably can hear me now. Welcome to our city council study session for this Monday, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. We have several items for discussion tonight, the first of which is our two thousand and twenty three state legislative session report. And we're pleased tonight to have Shelley Heldur with Gordon Thomas, Huntingville Governmental Affairs, to lead us through the lengthy report, hopefully with highlights and not the entire thirty seven pages of legislation passed. Some of which was interesting. That pertaining to Lakewood, most interesting.
Well, good evening. Good to be with you all. Before I get started, I just want to mention, Mayor mentioned it as well, there is a lengthy, comprehensive written report in your council packet. So, believe it or not, if you're not gonna make that your bedside reading, just know that that's a good reference document moving forward for the bills that pass the legislature that impact city governance. This evening, I'm gonna provide an overview of the two thousand and twenty three state legislative session. I'll review the outcomes of the city's legislative priorities. I'm gonna share highlights of a few other issues that impact cities and then we'll wrap up talking about next steps. So, the two thousand and twenty three session was the first time the legislature has conducted their work in person in two years. The Publix was still able to participate virtually through remote testimony at public hearings. But all legislators were present in Olympia. It was the first year of the biennium, so it was a long session, one hundred and five consecutive days. And the primary objective was to adopt the state's biennial budgets. In addition to adopting the budgets, the legislature considered over twenty one hundred bills and ultimately passed four hundred and eighty five. That slide was created before the Blake bill passed, which I will get to. Because this was the first year of the biennium, any bill that did not pass this year is automatically reintroduced for the next year. Democrats held strong majorities in both chambers, and so they set the agenda in terms of what policies were prioritized. And following the last election, there were over twenty new legislators elected to office. And so that meant that there were new committee chairs, new members in position of leadership for the caucuses. And all of that impacted what happened this session. So, as I mentioned, the primary objective of the long session is to adopt the state's budgets. The state has three budgets, the operating budget funds all state agency operations, the largest of which is the K through twelve education system. The twenty three, twenty five state operating budget is sixty nine point eight billion dollars. Some noteworthy allocations are twenty million for grants to local governments for updating your updating and implementing your comprehensive plans and development regulations. A hundred and fifty million to transition individuals living in encampments to housing. Over two hundred and fifty million in various behavioral health services. And eleven point three million for six additional basic law enforcement academy classes at three new regional academies that began in two thousand and twenty four, and the three new academies are in Pasco, Skagit County, and Clark County. The capital budget funds public and nonprofit construction projects that are non-transportation related. It's a nine billion dollar budget primarily funded through the sale of bonds. There's ninety five million in remaining bond capacity for a supplemental budget. The capital budget makes major investments in housing and homelessness, behavioral health, and education. The third and final budget is the transportation budget. It's thirteen point five billion dollars and is the first biennium for implementation of the Move Ahead Washington package. The revenues that fund the transportation budget, which is primarily the gas tax, are continuing to decline. So, heading into this session, the governor, the governor's budget delayed funding for many key projects. And for the most part, the legislature was able to honor the previous commitments that it made and provided for the phasing of funds over the next six years. So, in addition to adopting the biennial budget, they projected out spending for the next six years for mega projects around the state. This was the first budget to incorporate Climate Commitment Act revenues. And that, those revenues are scattered throughout the three budgets, but that spending is restricted to carbon-reducing programs and projects.
Can you move on to that just for a second?
Yep.
So, available to cities like Lakewood, Safe Routes School Grants, I see pedestrian bike complete street monies, okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to that more in a moment as well.
Okay.
So, moving on to discuss the city's top priorities, the city identified five priorities for this session. The first was a capital budget request for the partnership with the Nisqually Indian Tribe to install signage, art, and interpretive information throughout Fort Silicon Park. Representative Levitt and Senator Nobles sponsored the city's request. And the funding was included in both the House and the Senate proposed budgets, which is always a good sign. And usually means it'll be included in the final budget, which it was. So, the city was awarded three hundred and nine thousand dollars. And that amount includes the three percent administrative fee that will be deducted by Commerce. So, this adds to the long list of investments that the state has made for improvements at Fort Silicon Park and really is a testament to the support of the twenty eighth district, both legislators representing the district now and previously. Our second priority was also a capital budget request. On behalf of Living Access Support Alliance, the city requested five hundred thousand dollars for a twenty five unit affordable housing project. And initially, there was some hesitation about committing state resources to a project that the city had not already committed resources to. But after you all voted in early February to allocate a million dollars towards the project, the city's legislators were eager to sponsor the project. And in fact, Senator Nobles pitched the project to the Pierce County delegation, urging it to be considered as a county priority. When the budgets were released, the Senate proposal had four hundred and sixty thousand for the project. The House had the full five hundred thousand. So, we, of course, advocated that the final budget include the full amount, and it did. The third priority was public safety, and there were two areas of focus. The first was police vehicular pursuits. In two thousand and twenty one, the legislature passed a law requiring probable cause rather than reasonable suspicion to believe that the person in the vehicle has committed certain offenses before an officer could engage in a vehicular pursuit. The higher threshold has created challenges from many law enforcement agencies. Advocates of the initial reform were concerned that reverting back to reasonable suspicion would result in more dangerous pursuits. And, but after some unique legislative maneuvers, Senate Bill fifty three, fifty two passed the legislature. It lowers the evidentiary threshold for vehicular pursuits back to reasonable suspicion, but only for specific crimes. Notably, those crimes do not include property crimes. That was a major sticking point for some legislators who wanted to see the bill go further to include property crimes. For others, the bill was a reversal of the progress made on police reform in the two thousand and twenty one session. Ultimately, the bill passed because it had enough votes. And there were a majority of legislators who thought that this was progress over current law, though perhaps not the final solution. The second public safety topic is the reason the legislature was called back to Olympia for a special session. The state's current law on possession of controlled substances is set to expire on June thirtieth. That law was intentionally established to be a temporary solution following the Supreme Court's ruling in early two thousand and twenty one that drug possession was not a felony. Senate Bill fifty five, thirty six, which is known as the Blake Fix Bill, initially passed the Senate with a bipartisan mix of votes and established possession as a gross misdemeanor. And then outlined the procedure for pre-trial diversion and a pathway for vacation of conviction. The House amended the bill substantially. They established possession as a misdemeanor and included use in public places, among many other changes. Because the bill passed the bill, because the bill passed the chambers in two different versions, it didn't pass the legislature. So, a committee was formed to try to create a compromise. That compromise bill was brought forward on the final day of session. And it was brought to the floor of the House and failed, did not have enough votes to pass. And so, the regular session adjourned with no fix to current law. The governor called for a special session to begin on May sixteenth. And last Tuesday, legislators returned to Olympia and debated the compromise bill that had been negotiated between all four caucuses. The compromise establishes knowing possession as a gross misdemeanor and public use as a gross misdemeanor. Both are subject to a maximum of a hundred and eighty days in jail and a thousand dollar fine for the first two offenses. If there's a third offense, the maximum days in jail is raised to three hundred and sixty four, which is typically the standard for gross misdemeanors. This was all part of the compromise. After many impassioned floor speeches making arguments for and against the merits of the legislation, it passed and was signed by the governor into law on the same day. There's various effective dates in the bill. The fourth priority was a request for continued funding of the Community Partnership Program at Western State Hospital. The city's provided these services at Western State since two thousand and seven, and the funding has to be renewed each state budget cycle. This year, in addition to requesting the funding, we asked the budget language to be updated to reflect the changing community policing practices. Under the old language, the city had to provide the name of the officers that were dedicated to the three positions described in the budget. And without those assigned officers, the city could not bill for reimbursement from the state. The updated language allows the city to bill for the services provided based on the officers available and maintaining a single point of contact at the department for the hospital to call if needed. We've tried to make this change to the language for years, something that Chief Zaro was really adamant about, but have always faced resistance from budget writers. And so, in, in this case, our persistence paid off, and there was a willingness to make this language change in the budget this year. The final priority was unfortunately the item with the least progress. As a reminder, last session, we were successful in having funding allocated to the Department of Commerce to provide a report on the geographic locations of behavioral health and long-term facilities that are available to individuals discharged from state hospitals. That report was due to the legislature on December first, two thousand and twenty two. Despite continued follow-up with the agency, from myself and our state legislators, we still have not seen the report. We also requested that the legislature address loopholes in existing fair share policies, but there was no progress on that either. So, this continues to be a very challenging policy to advance.
Is there a way to condition completion of our comp plan update upon Commerce likewise giving us the report that we got obligated funds to pay for?
I guess that's something to look into.
It's crazy. Do as I say, not as I do.
In addition to the city's top priorities, you all have a policy manual. And that states the city's position on dozens of other city-related policies. So, I'm gonna briefly review highlights from three categories. One of the priorities the legislature had this session was to address the lack of available and affordable housing options. There were hundreds of bills introduced on this topic, and that may even be an understatement. A few noteworthy bills that passed include condominium liability reform, providing a SEPA exemption for residential development, that's consistent with a comp plan, providing cities with resources to improve their permit processing. And perhaps the most discussed and longest coming policy was on middle housing. The momentum for the middle housing bill has been building for years. And the legislature was really motivated to reduce construction costs. One of the major cost drivers for new homes is the price of land. And so, the concept behind building more units on the same footprint was, was really appealing to lawmakers. There were easily ten dozen different versions of this bill over the last several years. So, it can be kind of difficult to keep track of what actually passed. So, I'm gonna start off by saying what the bill doesn't do. It does not allow for sky-rise development in single-family neighborhoods. And it does not prohibit the construction of single-family homes. It does establish a minimum number of units that must be authorized on all lots zoned primarily residential. In Lakewood, this means that the city must allow at least two units on all lots and four units on lots within a quarter-mile walking distance of major transit. An accessory dwelling unit is considered a unit. And so, for cities that have already authorized accessory and dwelling units in all residential zones, that component of the bill is already accomplished. I also want to note that this does not mean that two units must be built on a lot. It just means that two units must be allowed. It remains up to the property owner to decide what they want to build. The version of the bill that passed the legislature was a compromise, both on the part of housing advocates who wanted to see additional units authorized on all lots and on the part of local governments who did not want their land use decisions to be preempted. As a city, we were heavily involved in the policy development, both this session and sessions previous. Both Dave Buer and Tiffany Spear reviewed countless versions of this bill and provided feedback to me so that we could be influential with our legislators and the lawmakers that were developing the policy. One of the things that we wanted to be very cognizant of was to ensure that this would not result in additional development in the North Clear Zone or the Air Corridor Zone. And we believe that was honored in this version. The second category within the policy manual issues that I'll review is all of the grant funding the city that will be receiving as a result of the state's capital budget. More and more, the state is moving towards creating grant programs to prioritize investments in specific categories. And because Lakewood has such an amazing Parks and Recreation Director in Mary Dodsworth, the city takes advantage of every funding opportunity for city projects. In this budget, Wards Lake Park is allocated two point one million dollars, which is a total of three different grants. Harry Todd Park is awarded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, the Public Works staff submitted a competitive application. And as a result, the city will be receiving over a million dollars for sidewalks near Lake Louise Elementary School via the Safe Routes to School Grant Program. And then lastly, via the newly funded Defense Community Compatibility Account, Lakewood was awarded nine hundred thousand dollars to address incompatible development in the North Clear Zone. And that is a perfect segue into the third category of military communities. This was a banner year for military communities due to the leadership of the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. SSMCP had four priorities this session, and they were successful in accomplishing all four. The capital budget allocated thirty five point eight million to the Defense Community Compatibility Account, which I just referenced. That account was created in two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and twenty one was the first year that it could have been funded, and the legislature did not fund it. And so, two thousand and twenty three is the first year that it's been funded. And its existence is really a testament to SSMCP and their commitment to that program. In addition to the funding for the account, the legislature passed Senate Bill fifty three, twenty four, which was sponsored by Senator Conway. It makes technical changes to the administration of the program to support its ongoing success. The operating budget allocates two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Lieutenant Governor's Office for facilitation of a statewide economic impact analysis of military installations. SSMCP has done these types of reports for the impact of JBLM alone, but there hasn't been a statewide report done in over a decade. The result of this report will obviously be very helpful for lawmakers at, at all levels of government. The third, improving the process for occupational licensing, it's been a priority for SSMCP because of its importance for military spouses. And this session, Representative Levitt was a champion for this topic. She sponsored House Bill one zero zero nine, which requires state licensing agencies to provide military spouses with a temporary license within thirty days of receiving their application. It makes several other changes to improve a spouse's access to employment and requires state licensing agencies to provide an annual report on their progress to the legislature to make sure that the targets that they're supposed to be accomplishing are being met. There were also four occupational compacts that were adopted. Audiology and speech pathology compact, the mental health counselors compact, both of those were sponsored by Representative Levitt. And the dentist and dental hygienist compact, and the nurse licensure compact. So, four, four compacts. If individuals are licensed in other compact states with those professions, they can more easily transfer and begin working immediately upon relocating to Washington. Finally, the transportation budget phased the seventy five million dollars for work along the I five Mounts Road to Tom Water and Nisqually River Delta Project, and they did so in accordance with the preferred timeline for the project. So, needless to say, it was an exceptional year for SSMCP, and Lakewood should be really proud of the role you all play in leading that organization.
Quick clarification, and on the two fifty for the study, that's going to SSMCP to do the study or contracted?
Good question. It's actually going directly to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, who will be facilitating that through the Legislative Committee on Economic Development and International Relations, referred to as L-CEDR. But SSMCP has already met with Lieutenant Governor's staff to make sure that we're part of the process and that it has the end goal that we're hoping for.
It's just not going to Commerce?
No, it's not going to Commerce.
Right?
So, now that session is over, what comes next? Well, you've heard me all say before that lobbying is a year-round effort. And to be successful during the legislative session, the interim months are, are really important for us to continue engagement. So, to start, I would encourage the city to consider ways of thanking and recognizing our state legislators, not, not just for advocating for the city's priorities, which they, they clearly did, but for their, their dedication of time and energy to public service. I mean, you all, you all know that sometimes it can be a thankless job. And so, getting that appreciation from fellow elected officials is important. With all the bills the legislature passed and all the grant funding and other projects that received funding, there is a lot of work to do. And so, city staff who already have their plates full have even more to do in the coming months and years to implement everything that occurred this session. And then, lastly, I know it sounds crazy since session just ended, but it's never too soon to begin preparing for the next session. In the fall, I'll be back with you all, and we will make updates to the city's agenda and policy manual to reflect items that were accomplished this session and to think about items that we may want to lay the groundwork for, for the next biennium. Two thousand and twenty four will be a short session, it'll be a supplemental budget year, so there won't be much funding available. But that's something, something to think about between now and, and the fall. Any questions?
Excellent overview, and just to thank you for your work on behalf of all of us here. It was a lot of work this year, and I enjoyed coming down, as did Deputy Mayor Moss and I think Mr. Brandstetter came down as well. And you were a gracious host and guide in our efforts to work with our legislature to inform them of our needs and to thank them and encourage them to drive it through to completion. So, thank you for your work on that. Questions for Ms. Heldur, Mr. Anderson?
Basically, three, two related. First one, on the override of local zoning to allow at least two units on any residential property. Is there any requirement, or was there any discussion of imposing a requirement on municipalities to actually divide properties into more than one parcel? Or do the two, or under this bill, do they remain on a single parcel?
That's a great question.
And how are they taxed?
There was a bill, it was referred to as the Lot Splitting Bill. And it was essentially an attempt to, yes, force the division of lots or force the allowance of division of lots over a certain size. This bill, to your point, doesn't have that in it. The Lot Splitting Bill died, so it did not pass. I do anticipate it will be back.
So, that's, that's the next step. Okay, now, with respect accolades for our legislators, I have two hard questions. First of all, did any legislator, any one of the six in the twenty eighth or twenty ninth district vote for a bill either in committee or on the floor that allowed our police to pursue stolen cars?
I don't know off the top of my head, because there were so many different versions of the bill, but I'd be happy to look into it and get back to you.
So, this one, I know there's a positive answer, but I don't know all the identities and scope. Did any one of those same six legislators ever vote against a bill either in committee or on the floor that would have allowed for the pursuit of stolen cars by the police?
Yes.
Who?
Who voted against a bill that didn't allow it?
Who voted against a bill that would have allowed pursuit of stolen cars? I think the entire House delegation that voted on the Democratic side, and we only have, we have four Democratic House members. If they voted, they all voted no to advance such a bill to the floor. No, that happened. What about, and did all four of ours vote, and what about the Senate side?
The bill, so the bill that was brought to the House floor did not include property crimes.
I know, but the one that didn't make it out of committee.
Right, but our four members aren't all on that committee, so they didn't have the option to vote in committee. So, that's why I
I thought there was a caucus vote.
No. If there was a caucus vote, it's not public.
Well, excuse me, I thought the caucus voted against the bill, against the procedural move to bring it to the floor.
That's correct.
I think that was in the Senate.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to know that before we move forward with any proclamations, because personally, I feel that's much more important than money. It's keeping our people safe.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Heldur? Mr. Brandstetter?
You know, thank you for this, for the report, and it's comprehensive, okay? As, as a long session would be, and particularly one that was there, that with just to follow up with Councilmember Anderson, I, I think in, in, in past years, we've generally been able to look at the results that we had, and we've been quite favorable, okay? And, 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 and it was easy to And, 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 and it was easy to wholeheartedly thank the legislators for their collective efforts. I think that this session is a little bit different in that in, in our public safety priorities. The actions that the legislature ultimately took fell well short of our expectations or in the community's expectations as to how to better to look to be able to go and do that. I guess I'm not so concerned about their individual votes at the times when votes were all being allowed. But I guess that I didn't necessarily see any of our six legislators taking a leadership role in trying to frame the public safety legislation, particularly on pursuits or on, on drug possession. You know, they all voted one way or another and, and the bills that, 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 that did pass were at least this would be, this I think described as incrementally better than what was, but not not ideal and fully meeting the needs of, of a community. But am I right in that supposition that, that, that they, they played well in housing and military things and transportation, but that, that our six folks just were, were not aggressive leaders or advocates in the, on the public safety bills?
I'm racking my brain right now trying to remember this, the committee assignments of each of our six legislators. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't think any of the six are assigned to a public safety committee. And so I think that is an accurate statement on your part, that they're not necessarily leading the policy discussions because those are not the committees that they've been assigned to. The committees that they've been assigned to have been focused on, or the policies that they're leading on are more relevant to the committees that they've been assigned to. I'm hesitant to say that definitively because I, it's very possible my memory is failing me and perhaps one of them is on a public safety committee. But I can definitely follow up, following Councilmember Anderson's question.
I guess, you know, when we, and, and when we meet with them and I think that each of them individually and all of them collectively, there are some, some good things we can attribute to them to be able to, to go and, 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 and do that. It's just that if we're going to be candid with them when we talk about public safety, the legislature as a whole and we're, and, and so it, it's, it seems that, you know, going forward is that, that we're not didn't achieve what we, what we hoped to by making it one of our legislative priorities. You know, we hope to really make the community safer. And and we only did that incrementally, not, not significantly, which could have been, could have been possible in both in the eyes of, of a public and the community. I had a, a couple of questions on, on, on your comments where you know, the, 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 the pursuit bill, the fact that there even was bill, you, you noted that it was got through the Senate by a, not the usual method, but a suspension of rules and, and being how that goes through. Exactly what is that process that, that, that it took to even get that to a consideration of where they were being considered? Because the House wasn't going to consider it. How does that work?
So typically when bills are introduced, they have a public hearing in the committee that they've been assigned to. So the Senate bill was assigned to essentially the Senate Public Safety Committee. And it's referred to as the Law and Justice Committee. The, the Senate Chair typically has the decision over what bills receive a public hearing and which ones don't. The Chair of the Public Safety, or the Chair of the Law and Justice Committee did not think that it was appropriate to advance a bill. And so she did not schedule it for a public hearing. Not, a bill not receiving a public hearing means that it's not considered for a vote of the committee, means that it doesn't get out of committee. Typically, a bill that doesn't get out of committee means that it dies. However, the Senate rules allow for the majority of the Senate to pull a bill out of committee, even if the committee hasn't recommended it. And so that's what they did with the vehicular pursuits bill. The majority of the Senate, I think it's two-thirds actual, two-thirds majority of the Senate voted to pull the bill directly to the floor for a vote.
So I guess that I'm truly glad that that, that happened. Beyond our delegation, is there some senator or small group of senators that could be thanked for giving at least that far?
That's a good question. The, the one senator that comes to mind that I know was kind of instrumental in facilitating that conversation, I don't know if he was the only one, was Senator Mark Mullet, who represents the 5th Legislative District or Issaquah area. But I know he kind of prompted a conversation amongst his colleagues to consider whether that procedural maneuver should be used.
In the operating budget, there was $150 million for a covenant homeownership program. How does that work? I mean, the title is nice, but I'm not sure that I understand. Is, is that a program that is going to be util in, in Lakewood? And that would be something that is promotable by the city?
Yeah, the covenant homeownership program is going to be created or I guess administered by the Department of Commerce. It is funded through a $100 document recording fee that's charged on the purchase of new homes. And essentially it creates a grant program to support first-time home buyers. I guess the details of the program are going to be developed by Commerce. So once we know more specifics, I'm sure we can share that with the city and see how the city may be able to promote and have residents take advantage of it.
I mean, as a city, we have helped low-income first-time home buyers with down payments assistance from time to time. And I just want to know if this is going to be something that if we can get engaged with to really help folks in the city of Lakewood. But, but there's some rules that have to be crafted, is that?
Yes, exactly.
And that there, there was a let me start down to where I can the Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program. It has always been frustrating that we've had to use up one of the limited spots that we can have as a legislative priority every two years to ask that that be funded. Is the changing in wording now going to get us out from under that where it's likely to more likely be a regular operating expense that we don't have to keep? I mean, it's, we only, you, you only can make so many things a priority. And the fact that it's a priority should be significant to our legislators, but to have done it for over a decade, you know, every, every time it's, it's, it's a priority to, to, to move through in doing that. And is and we moved beyond the point of where we can put it in the policy manual and, 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 and look to, to get it funded as ongoing funding with this new language?
Unfortunately, no, the language does not change the fact that it is still a biennial appropriation, meaning every two years the legislature will reconsider whether the program should be funded again.
Well, you know, that's just, it just seems we can, we can come up with other priorities and, and we have other priorities, but we just kind of use that space for that one because it's over $600,000. We not having it would create a big hole in the city's budget to be able to go and do that. That doesn't take a lot of work. It's been pretty good every time. And what else did I have right here? On the transportation budget, where it the I-5 JBLM corridor improvements, it continued their funding on the multi-years going on. But there was a, there's a link to a to a table in your report that only Councilmember Pokie would be understand because he writes those kinds of tables for the county to be able to go and do that. But I was trying to find out if the year, it sort of moved funding and put it in blocks the year. Did the year for the funding for the non-motorized pathway between Pelican and Ponder change and you pushed out two years further than it was before?
That's a good question. That document that you referred to, the, it's referred to as the LEAP list. It does not specify that project as a line item. Right, right. And so the, essentially the, the budget doesn't differentiate that from the broader JBLM corridor improvements. So it's something that we would need to reach out to WashDOT to ask, and I can do that.
Okay, just because it, it, it sort of indicated that there were phasers and things to do that, but it's already moved from a phase two to whatever the last phase turns out to be. To be able to go, go for it and do that, then you're kind of concerned with that. Well, certainly appreciate it for you and, 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 and your colleagues at, at the firm for what you've done in, in, in our regard. I, I, I think, you know, we're very well-served by, by, by your work as opposed to many cities and towns that just rely upon the Association of Washington Cities to, to come up with some sort of common, common position that is helpful to all, which is not necessarily the case. So, but so, you know, you know, so while, while you tell us that we should thank the legislators, I think that, you know, first and foremost, we should be thanking you for, for, for a lot of these things. And, and I note that when we meet with legislators, they, they routinely echo that. And I affect that, 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 that being their source of information that helped them do as well as they can is something that they value from you and that we value you providing to them.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time tonight and for the overview. Well, next, we have our 2023 Urban Forestry Program Established Memorandum by our friends from the University of Washington. So I think Jamie Zaya, Sam Zoo, Marlin Sanchez, and Ala Cross are here. Give us an overview. Come on up.
Remarks, and then we'll turn it over to the students.
Absolutely. Mr. Bure.
Each year, Lakewood receives an invitation from the University of Washington Evans School of Public Policy and Governance to participate in their Student Consulting Lab Program. Process starts in July and ends in May. The consulting lab is a collabora, a collaboration between the students, their staff, and in this case, city employees, including myself, Michael Vargas and Tiffany Spear. And they're here to help us solve solutions to policy and organizational problems. Last year, we chose to examine how to best proceed with the establishment of Urban Forestry Program. A request for proposal was submitted in September. The faculty reviewed it and then assembled a group of students specific to our needs. Scope of work was negotiated and a contract finalized in December. And so they have until January through May to complete the assignment. So they're really under the gun to try to get this accomplished. On the Lakewood side, we provide a meeting schedule, background data, staff time, helpful hints, and if they need a little additional financial assistance to see something through, we work with them. The final document, Establishing the Roots of Urban Forestry in Lakewood: An Implementation Guide, has been presented to the Planning Commission and to the Parks Board. And tonight, the City Council receives the same report. It will be presented by the student team, our UW colleagues. I'm just going to use their first names, Jamie, Sam, Marlin, and Ala. And so without further ado, I turn the, the time over to them.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. Well, my name is Marlin Sanchez and this is Jamie, Zaya, Sam Zoo, and Ala Cross. And like they've said, we're gonna present to you the findings from our report Establishing the Roots of Urban Forestry in Lakewood, Washington. And here's just a little brief overview of what we're going to be covering today. First, just the methods we use to reach our conclusions. And then we're gonna finish with the recommendations that we have drafted for the city. And a very important starting point for us is thinking of the goals that the city of Lakewood and this council have approved in terms of urban forestry. First of, first of all, the goal number one being increasing Lakewood's tree canopy from 26% to 40% by 2050. And also developing and promoting an urban forest management plan in the near term. And there was last year a process that concluded on updating the tree code that was also very informative to this report and that we are aware that sparked a lot of interest from the community in bringing forward these urban forestry programs. And this is what this report comes to do, complement these efforts that the city has already taken and kind of guide how, what the first steps could be. And then based on that background, we developed a five-year urban forestry implementation guide. We took into consideration Lakewood's environmental goals that I was talking about, the organizational structure, the community needs, and of course, financial limitations for the program. And then in researching about it, we developed a literature review that went over benefits and environmental impacts of such a program. We analyzed data, especially data from Planet Geo that the city worked with for the tree code update last year. We also used some data from the Google Environmental Insights, canopy, tree canopy details, as well as semi-structural interviews with the Washington Department of Natural Resources, as well as representatives from Natural Resources, as well as representatives from other cities in Washington State that have urban forestry programs that are comparable to Lakewood at some level, as well as nonprofits that are leading urban forestry in the region. And finally, we did conduct a case study that focused mainly in the cities of Issaquah, Vancouver, and Seattle. We chose these cities based on how their programs were in different stages, but were comparable to a certain degree to Lakewood because of size and also to see the evolution of their programs. Some have been going for a long time. And also there are important indicators in the field such such as the Tree Equity Score and the Tree City Recognition from nonprofits in the area that we also looked at to select the cities, of course, also in conversation with the Community and Economic Development Department. It's important to know that even though we did not include outreach to the community surveys in this process, especially because of the time limitation we had for the project, we did look at other efforts that happened before that gained that feedback from the community and included those results into our analysis. So based on these methods, we concluded on three main elements that we called the Roots of an Effective Urban Forestry Programs. The first one being a resource assessment that we're gonna talk a little bit more about what that means, community engagement, the second one, and finally administrative capacity for the city to manage such a program. And then with that, I'm gonna pass it out to Jamie for our first recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Marlin. So, yes, we have four main recommendations in this report. Our first is for the city to develop a mission, vision, and goals slash outcomes for the urban forestry plan. We have drafted up vision and mission statements for the city, but obviously this is gonna be need to be reworked to reflect the city's goals. But I'm just gonna skip through this. We can come back to it if you would like. But our main, we wanted to focus on in this presentation are the main goals for this plan because it is very based on what the budget looks like in later sections. So the main goals for this program were forest health, making sure that we keep planting trees that are like native to the area, controlling for invasive species, making sure that the forest health in the area is as be as best as it can be. Tree population expansion, keeping with those goals that were in the tree code review and the new ordinance, making sure that the canopy is expanding over the years. Community engagement, regularly updating the public, keeping them involved in this entire process through the management. Equitable access to benefits, making sure that the the benefits of this program are felt throughout the entire community, not just by single groups. And then sustainability of the program, not necessarily in an environmental sense sense, but more in a financial and operational sense. So making sure this program is is established in a way that can be that can go on for years to come. So I'll go straight into our second recommendation, which is based off of our first root of urban forestry, which is to complete a comprehensive resource assessment and begin restoration practices in the city. So what does resource assessment look like? So through our case studies and our analysis, we learned that urban forestry programs basically all start with a resource assessment to evaluate the current canopy and the volume where things are distributed throughout the city and where you could potentially start planting or where you need to control for invasives, et cetera. So that it comes down to three steps. You can use remote sensing and G I S to map out areas, you'd use satellite imageries and create what is called management units. Then, once you select the management units that you think are best for planting, you can you assign where you want to do on-the-ground field assessments to get an idea of, you know, how old the trees are, how many there are. Not a full audit, but just getting an idea of how much management is needed on each section. And you can prioritize what management unit needs, what type of work, whether it's invasive species control or you can begin planting, et cetera. So what does this look like for Lakewood currently? So with that tree code review with the new ordinance and Planet Geo's assessment, you guys basically did that first step, use getting the priority planting areas. This is their map where the census blocks are prioritized based on tree equity score, surface temperature, and a lot of other factors to determine where the best areas to start planting are. We did a little bit further analysis to determine where you guys can start even within this group of eight. We focused on public versus private land to try to give you a good sense of where there's a lot of public open space that you can kind of start planting quickly. And in a little bit more with with potentially less resources because with the private lands, you're gonna need a lot more outreach and work with the community there. So going for a little bit, our next recommendation is to utilize what's called the Forest Landscape Assessment Tool or FLAT. So this is a very simplified tool that a lot of urban forestry programs in the state use. It is implemented by a professional urban forester, and then it's all the results are let will come down to these single-digit numbers. So it's very easy for city staff to recognize where the forest health is maybe bad, like if it's a nine, that's pretty critical. Maybe you have to involve some professional help there, et cetera. And so the next step after that is the city to develop what criteria you use to judge to get those numbers. So looking forward a little bit more, the full our full steps for what the resource assessment looked like is to implement that flat assessment and begin like select your criteria of what you want to look for, maybe soil health, maybe water health, stuff like that. Then use the scores from from that assessment to determine maintenance. This is where a lot of more specific cost estimates are gonna come in because once you get an idea of how many invasives are in areas, you can get a better sense of how many man-hours you need there. Then you can identify where professional help is maybe needed. Maybe you need to contract out. Throughout this entire process, we recommend to utilize best restoration practices, making sure you do invasive species removal before you plant and then checking up on those saplings each year to make sure that it is surviving well. And then our last recommendation is to develop a private land strategy because most of the land here in Lakewood is privately owned. Obviously, there's a lot of areas for the canopy to expand in those areas, the areas. So I'm gonna actually hand it over to Sam here to go over our next recommendation.
Thank you, Jamie. So I will go through the community engagement section. So in this section, I will present the importance of community engagement for a U F P first, followed by the strategies we designed for City of Lakewood to best engage with the community. So first, why community engagement? We believe it is essential to develop a U F P that aligns with the interests and needs of of this Lakewood community. As a successful U F P, it depends heavily on the robust support and active participation from the community members. It is also necessary to consider various aspects of accessibility and representation for the diverse community in the City of Lakewood when designing and implementing these activities to ensure equity and inclusivity. Meaningful community engagement can increase the number of trees that are planted overall, but also results in more sustained stewardship that increases survivability, which is critical for community members to enjoy the long-term benefits of increased can be coverage. So the strategies we design for City of Lakewood include the following, and the full rationale and implementation logistics can be viewed in the full report. So two major strategies are identified, which are community outreach and constructive volunteer system. So first, for the community outreach aspect, we have the following strategies. First, host community meetings to acquire public comments to cooperate into the U F P. This includes identifying a meeting with community leaders first, then conducting town hall meetings with residents in several locations, including community centers for underrepresented populations. Second, launch online public surveys, which can be incorporated into the existing surveys identified in the twenty twenty-one to twenty-four goals in the City Council agenda. These surveys can be used as complementary tools for outreach meetings to obtain additional valuable input from community members and start acquiring public's opinions on responsibility of the right-of-way trees. Third, host tree-related workshops for prior owners to educate them on better planting and maintaining their private trees, as well as align them on the tree regulations published in the most recent tree ordinance. And fourth, we recommend the City of Lakewood reach out to existing and promising organizations that are able to provide support to help implement its urban forestry program. So for the second aspect, we recommend the City of Lakewood construct a volunteer system. This can be divided into three consecutive steps. Recruit volunteers, which can be conducted in the outreach meetings and pondering with esteemed community associations. Build a forest stewardship program, which allows the city to have more experienced volunteer leaders that can implement restoration projects, lead volunteer events, and work in coordination with the city staff. As well as appoint a volunteer coordinator, who, based on the budget selection that Marlin will talk about in just a second, will either be one of the city staff that is identified as neighborhood coordinator in Budget One or the full-time program administrator identified in Budget Two. So I will hand over to Marlin, who will talk about our fourth recommendation.
Thank you, Sam. So our fourth and last recommendation relates to that third route I was mentioning at the beginning about administrative capacity in the city. And it's about creating these capacity and structures to manage the program. And there are a couple ways we thought that the city could go about defining this. Option A would involve the city creates a standalone urban forestry advisory board that would establish as a priority following the urban forestry advancements and support departments within the city coordinating among themselves to the develop the different tasks and activities that are part of the program. These options would imply that because it's an advisory board that has volunteer members from the community would have community participation in the management and follow-up of the program. And this would not, this option would not require that the city hires a full-time employee initially. Then we thought about an alternative with option B that would imply expanding the responsibilities of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Advisory Board. However, because this board already has a list of priorities, we do recommend that the city hires a full-time program coordinator to support the work and this position would actually have as a priority, the urban forestry program. And would facilitate as well coordination among the different city departments. And this option still includes the community participation at the management and coordination level because it still has the advisory board component. Finally, option C would imply that the city does not have a standalone or expand the responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, but hire a full-time program coordinator whose sole responsibility is to manage the urban forestry program and then support that coordination among city departments. In this option, then the city would miss the community participation at this high level of coordinating and following on on the priorities related to the advisory board. And then now Allah is gonna keep going with how we implement these laws.
Yeah, thanks, Marlin. So essentially, based on our three recommendations or four recommendations and the outcomes that we talked about in the beginning and the goals, we developed priorities for the first five years. These are really just about getting the program off the ground, securing funding, standardizing tree maintenance procedures across the city, looking at funding resources, volunteer recruitment, community engagement. So you've outlined those priorities. And then based on those priorities and the organizational structures, we developed two budgets. I'm not gonna go into the details of the budgets. They're in the full report and they're on the appendices on the presentation. The Budget One is essentially for if the city decided to have a standalone urban forestry advisory board. The assumptions in this budget are that city staff would be the primary people carrying out the activities of the program. So the main differences between these two budgets is that staffing. You'll see that the total expenditures in Year One are about two hundred and fifty thousand in Budget One and about two hundred and sixty thousand in Budget Two. That is entirely based on staffing. In the second budget, we show the city hiring a program coordinator and not having a board necessarily. And that includes if Parks and Recreation Advisory Board takes on those roles. And so in that first budget, we essentially have accounted for various city employees taking on some responsibilities, essentially equivalent to one full-time employee. And then the professional services, especially in that first year, cover that comprehensive resource assessment, estimated about a hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna give you on-the-ground details on forest health in the city and really help prioritize work moving forward. And then in the following years, it accounts for planting trees and for contract labor. And then the budget does drop off in the first year by about ten or so percent because you don't have that urban, that resource assessment in the year two, in years two through five. And then it starts to increase, and that's increases mostly based on salary and benefit increases and the city increasing the number of trees that you plant to reach that canopy goal by twenty fifty. One of the big questions that we've thought about is how can the city fund this work? There's obviously the general fund where the city can allocate specific dollar amounts towards this work. There are nonprofit, public, and private partnerships. Those require employees looking into those, applying for grants. And there's also the City Tree Fund that the city established as part of the tree ordinance update that can be used for urban forestry activities and purchasing trees. One of the most innovative ways we've seen cities fund their urban forestry activities is through re the reallocation of stormwater fees. This wouldn't necessarily be increasing fees. This is a provision that cities are able to use, reallocating a portion of those fees to urban forestry activities. The City of Vancouver, Washington, almost a hundred percent funds their urban forestry program through the use of this fee. Their estimated expenditures for twenty twenty-three are about one point eight million, and most of that is funded through those stormwater fees. So it's a really stable source of revenue. There are obviously implications for reallocating those fees. The City of Issaquah actually just hired an urban forestry supervisor, and it's about a hundred and eighty thousand, they've estimated. And that's all being paid for with this with the fees. So that's one of the things that we suggest the city kind of look into if it's a revenue source you're interested in using. And so those are our four main recommendations. Like we said, there's a lot more detail in our full report, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Lots of good, hard work went into that, and we want to drag it to June second. Project completion, but you know, before I open it up to general questions from the council members, you know, you've got the Parks and Rec Advisory Board here by a mere fortuity or not. And so I'll certainly talk to the council and let them ask questions first, but I would be interested in the board, since you're here, what your thought is about assuming some of the responsibilities articulated as part of your work plan, since we're gonna talk about work plan tonight. So think about that. And then I'll open it up to council for questions first. Any off the top of your head? I have one one question. It'll kick off some discussion. You know, one of the challenges, it's important, I think, to do an urban forestry program. And Mr. Bueller may or may not know whether or not that helps link us to becoming a Tree City USA, which is something we've talked about, right? And this would qualify us, obviously, at this level of expenditure to do just that. Okay. One of the challenges, and I don't know if the cities you studied, not all of which may be similarly sized to Lakewood, like Seattle perhaps or Vancouver, but we have similar challenges, and that is the struggle between grappling with increased population and housing requirements to accommodate the density and tree canopy goals. And we just heard you sat in the audience tonight. You're not in the weeds like we are on some of the legislation that passed on the middle housing, which is requiring density on existing single-family lots, which is hard to do without taking down trees. So did you have any opportunity to view any struggles with those other cities, any studies that they did on the impact of development and housing? And how those those forces impacted their urban forestry program goals and vision and work plans? It's an interesting conundrum, right?
Yeah, we we thought this might come up. We haven't had a chance to really look into it, so I don't have any like historical information to provide with you. I think the, from our research, I think what we would say is that having an urban forestry program in place, and even the tree ordinance that the city passed, is really helpful when you think about that. And having, I think, especially the community engagement part and having the community engaged and passionate about the urban canopy in Lakewood is really helpful when you when you get down the road and you are facing those issues. So we don't have like, this is how another city is doing it. I think having a policy in place and having an urban forester on staff who is knowledgeable about, you know, what trees can we keep or, you know, having kind of having that level of knowledge on staff.
Can we creatively develop identity around these goals? Yeah, it's it's going to be an issue for us. As it will be for all. As it will be for all communities. So it's an in- interesting thing to think about down the road for the next project.
Right. And yeah, I just, I wanna add that this is something that might come up uh very briefly in our report in the component of in integrating the private part or like the community, getting them um motivated, understanding what the program is about, because there is a big portion of the land that is on private property. Um so that is also going to play a very relevant role, having that not only the interest from the community, but also helping build the capacity and the knowledge to be able to also keep um some of the tree canopy that is not only on public, public land.
Mr. Anderson.
So you, you've used a couple of different terms when talking about staffing. One was like program coordinator, the other one is forester. What have you, and I, I put two different definitions on those. One is a public administrator and the other one's a subject matter expert. Wh- wh- what are other communities doing in that regard? Do they have? Do they hire, is their first priority hiring a subject matter expert as in a forester? Or is it a staff person to coordinate?
Um I'd say every city does it different, which I know is not necessarily helpful. Um I'll use this to give Issaquah as an example because their program is fairly new. I think they did their implementation guide in twenty nineteen. So they've spent the last four years, the, the benefit that they had is they had a staff member who was able to commit half of their time to urban forestry activities, primarily community engagement. So they've spent the last four to five years really engaging their community. Um yeah, really building their forest stewardship program.
Issaquah.
It's Issaquah, yeah, getting, so getting the pro- getting a lot of buy-in from their community. Um and then just this year, they hired a full-time urban forest supervisor and a part-time volunteer coordinator. But because they had the staffing available to have someone who currently worked for the city kind of do that for the last five years, they didn't have to immediately hire someone. Um I think if the city chose, if Lakewood was decided not to hire an urban forester in year one, because you know, there's not a ton of community buy-in yet or financially, whatever the reason may be. Um I think our recommendation would be that definitely be working with a certified arborist. Um I know that community economic development already has plans to be working with an um urban forester, a certified arborist on some of the planning aspects of the tree ordinance. Um so I think it really depends on what the city feels like they have capacity for. An urban forester, they are a subject matic- matter expert, they're going to cost more money most likely if you were to hire someone full-time. Um so that was one of the considerations we made in going with a program coordinator upfront versus an urban forester.
So did you look in all into um methodology for species selection? So you know, there's really two categories here, one where we can control the public land and another one where we can encourage the private land. All trees aren't created equal. Some grow slow, some grow fast, some are harvesting more than others. Some are invasive, but grow really well here like Douglas fir. Uh others like Gary Oak are native prairie and go very, very slowly. So how do, uh, wh- what did you learn about species selection or encouragement by public bodies?
Yeah, so we, we do in our report uh provide a uh planting guide, not only like distance and stuff like that, how to plant and like some native species of trees and uh invasives, native, invasives and native plants as well. Uh but we weren't able to get, give as many specifics on like what kind of things to plant because it really comes down to that first like assessment, that flat assessment that I was speaking about. Uh because there's going to be different areas where different trees are going to most likely be appropriate uh based on like soil, uh water availability, things like that. So that's what a, a hired arborist uh or a urban forester coordinator could help uh identify with in the future. Once you get that on-the-ground assessment, that's why we kind of stressed it so much because it's going to help you get a lot of those first details of like, okay, what, what kind of species can we plant in specifically where? Uh and so it'll, it, that, that will help light, like lighten up. We have, our documents are like very long of species lists you could potentially do, but that's because there's a lot of potential. Um and so getting the on-the-ground stuff will be a lo- a lot more enlightening. You have this one? And I'll just add to that, we actually worked with the Pierce Conservation District on our list. So we sent them kind of, this is what we've seen in the area. They came back and, you know, said, maybe consider this, maybe not that. Um and we have like in our report, a recommendation obviously to, to connect with them um on that as well. And, and as far as like the private land, some other cities have, and this is also in our report, comprehensive tree list that they have on their website. Um that's one of the things we recommend is the city having, we ha- you have some stuff on trees on your website, but having like a comprehensive, here's some trees we recommend. There's a lot of resources out there that can kind of help with, you know, seventy-two percent, I think, of your city's tree canopy is on private land. So encouraging people to plant those trees that um are native or are not invasive, yeah. Yeah, and tree giveaways and things like that.
It just as an aside, I personally uh observed the world's greatest failure of urban forestry in Abu Dhabi where the sheik decided that they would uh have a million trees and create a desert-resistant forest uh with desalinated water at the cost of irrigation costs of about a dollar a day a tree and it, he di- they didn't quite make it ten years and everything dried up. Yeah, yeah. So they, 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 they tried, but the, the species selection there was supposed to work. It, it certainly didn't, but here we uh, we have plenty of water, we don't have very good soil. So uh it's a different, different, certainly a different equation. They should have tried the Gary Oak.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, thank, thank you all for your, both for being here tonight and your efforts uh on our behalf uh to be able to go and do that. You know, uh, we had a goal and there was actually a good bit of some community, community conversation about what the goal for the tree canopy should be. You know, we decided to look at uh, you know, get to, get to, get to fifty percent by twenty fifty. I don't know, maybe the numbers just sounded it to, to, to do that. But um you know, what, what kind of progress should we expect as we embark on trying to increase the tree canopy? Obviously, it, it, it won't be linear, just uh being able to go and do that. But in your, the literature and the things that you found, you know, um because in, in terms of community outreach, uh you know, one of the elements of that is managing expectations. You know, you know, we have, what, what, we want to build support and, and for what we're doing. Um we have uh, al- also have uh a community that, that is, is somewhat results-oriented. And so they want to kind of want to see what's happening. So what are some of the places that you studied? How, how do they, in addition to getting support, how did they deal with the managing expectations aspect of community engagement?
Well, that's a great question. And this is why the community engagement component is so central to urban forestry programs. And we have seen this in um most, if not all, cities that it really um depends on not only communicating to the community the steps that the city is doing, but only, for example, having a volunteer system where community members actually come and help plant trees or do other work in certain spaces. Um is really important, plays a very important role and why we think uh it can be critical to managing those expectations because it's not something that um is just the city is doing, taking these efforts, but the community is working together and is actually aware and constantly updated on what it means. Another component we, we included in our report that can be helpful also for the city to estimate how quickly uh it can progress towards this um goal is how many trees you're able to plant once you start the planning process. It is very important to communicate um the different phases of this program. Um that sometimes the understanding could be of the city starting an urban forestry program and we're going to start planting trees tomorrow. But actually, there are a few steps that need to happen, like the resource assessment to know actually where you can plant the trees or is there invasive species control that needs to happen before trees are actually able to grow in those areas. So the key component there is community engagement, not only in being aware of the steps that are happening, but also integrating them into the activities and putting it out there what the phases are of the program and even before the planning starts. And then there is also obviously a financial component to planting trees. Trees take time to grow as well. So having this community engagement component also implies that the city and the way that you decide to manage this program drafts very clear communication um tools for the community to understand what the process is. And that is going to be key in managing those expectations, both related to financial expectations and also about how long the trees take to grow and actually transform into that canopy growth.
The um, I guess I just have so as curious about the budget options or what, what, what a budget might look like uh that you gave us. And um it didn't seem to be a budget for actually buying trees. Yeah, and you know, you had salaries and benefits for the people and the coordinators to, to, to do that. And then a very low number for supplies and indirect costs and some professional services uh uh dollars, which I took based on your time to be you, you contracting with foresters as opposed and hiring and, and having your staff, paid staff be coordinators. So I guess that how, how, how do, uh, in the case studies that you said, how do people actually pay for trees?
Yeah, so in our, in year one, you're right, we don't have um any budget for purchasing or planting trees. Um the main two, you know, it's staffing and then there's professional services. In years two through five, we do estimate that the city plants trees. Those are in it's not shown here, it's in the report and we have those um like the full spreadsheets available. Um essentially what we do is we have the city increasing the number of trees planted each year. And what we account for is not only the purchasing of the trees, but also the, the contract tree maintenance is in there as well. And so what, what we tried to do, because it is hard to know how many trees the city can plant without knowing the conditions on the ground. Um we estimated a certain number of trees each year. And then we have the contract tree planting going up slightly and also assuming that the city is going to have hopefully more community engagement. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one increase on number of trees planted and labor needed. Um and I think we have like fairly low numbers in the first few years. In year two, we estimate the city plant um a hundred trees and it grows by a hundred over those first four years. And the city, if the city has the um, the funds available or the labor either through contract labor or through community engagement, then that number could obviously grow a lot quicker.
Mr. Mayor, if I could help the students a little bit here, uh Department of Commerce and the legislature did approve a grant for urban forestry for this coming biennium. We can get more details, that might, might be something that we would like to pursue. The other piece is that we found out the city of Sumner has a uh urban forestry program and a tree farm. So there's been some discussion about uh working with them and expanding their tree farm to include the needs for trees in the city of Lakewood. So those are some of the things that have come about as a result of this conversation on urban forestry. So my apologies to the students, I just want to add to the conversation a little bit.
No, I think it's great and Councilmember Bell and I were chatting too. It might be worthwhile to invite for a further conversation, maybe the person from Sumner and the person from Issaquah uh to come down and give us some perspective from their cities, you know, and best practices that they've found and um lessons learned and those kinds of things. That would be great as we put the, all of this together. Going once, going twice, as they say?
Oh.
All right, Councilmember Lorsell.
Figure out how to run them. Uh, thank you all for coming in. That's, that's really great. Uh and this kind of expands on what Mr. Buwer and the mayor were talking about. So your third recommendation is around developing a community engagement strategy. Did you benchmark uh other municipalities on their incentive programs for private landowners to get trees from the city from a, a free tree program or a vouchers program where they can go to a local nursery and get trees to plant on their property?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we looked at a couple of other cities. A, a lot of other cities in the area um have tree giveaways. That's a pretty common one where the city purchases trees potentially from the tree fund um and then has tree giveaways throughout the city. Um the Pierce Conservation District actually does that as well. So I think that's a, a really good resource that the city could draw upon. Um the city of Issaquah, which their program started back in two thousand and seven, so they're very Vancouver, excuse me, city of Vancouver started back in two thousand and seven. So they're very far into their program. They actually just started um really focusing on their private land strategy. And one of the really innovative things they're doing is not only are they doing tree giveaways, but they're also offering to do tree maintenance. Um uh first in five years and then in ten years for landowners. So it also um it allows people who maybe don't feel that they have the capacity to do tree maintenance to get a free tree for their public land, for their private land, as well as to ensure the, the life of that tree. And so tree giveaways are one of the most common ways that cities do it. Um and then adding in perhaps a bag of mulch, other kinds of things that the cities will incorporate as well. Yeah.
Well, last question from me. Was it a fun project? Did you enjoy it? Yeah, what was, uh, give us a key takeaway that you learned and will kind of support your, your educational experience as a result.
Go for it. Um I think this project was just very confirming that there is no one-size-fits-all approach to public policy problems. Um and there were many points in the process where we were reading about these programs that other cities had, but then also meeting with representatives from these cities and then learning other layers of details about them and just understanding the context.
Of bureaucracy, yeah.
Yeah. Context, different conversations that happen and actually just how the structure of the city and like the interest from the community really shape what the final decision is going to be, which is also why we wanted to keep like a lens of this is what we have learned, this is what we think would work in Lakewood, but really there are more conversations that would need to happen. Also with like the community very closely to actually you decide what is actually best for Lakewood. Um so I would think, I would say is that um many cities just do it their own way. Um the one thing that I think there is a lot of um there's like a best practice is with the advisory board, um but other things vary widely. So I would say that it's, it, it can shift. There's no one right way to do it.
Yeah, I like the concept of the advisory board because that certainly generates and sustains public participation at a certain level, right? For sure. Well, great. Well, thank you all for coming. We're pleased that you engaged in a project near and dear to our hearts in Lakewood. And so I'll let you go forth and, you know, head back to Seattle or wherever you're going, whatever. But you're always welcome in Lakewood. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Well, next is our Parks and Recreation and Urban Forestry Program Advisory Board. Who's going to provide us an update on what they thought was uh their work plan, but come on up, we'll, we'll chat about it. Thank you, Greg. Yeah, exactly. That's wonderful. Well, welcome Chair Gerwin and Vice Chair Ipo Bazi. Good to see you all tonight.
Evening.
So lead us through the work plan and then as I teased, we'd love to get your feedback if you have some on off the cuff on what we all just heard in the urban forestry program presentation.
Yeah, again, I'm Jason Gerwin, Chair of the Board. I wanted to just make sure we introduce all our members. Vito Yakobazzi, Vice Chair.
Caitlin Miller, Young Counsel.
Janet Spinga.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Okay, and so I'm going to go over kind of what we've accomplished in the past year and then pass it on to Vito for our work plan. And a lot of the work that we've done in this past year is going to be carried on into, um, this year, twenty twenty-three. Um, but some of the big, big key items are discussing pollinators and the importance to pollinators to parks. Um, we got an update from Alan on our South Sound Wildlife Area. And I've got to say for me personally and the whole community, uh, the work that he's doing out there has vastly improved that property and, and we're thankful as a community. Uh, we've looked at the non-militarized post uh transportation plan and participated in that surveying. Uh, we had a wonderful meeting with the Premier Park Neighborhood and discussed, discussed the future plans for that playground and, and moving that forward. Um, we got back on to our beloved topic of street ends and that can, uh, topic continues into this year. Um, I think the entire board was extremely impressed with uh Mr. Brewer's presentation on climate change, the work that Google has done, uh, and this most current tree um, tree policy updates and, and management uh is hugely important to this board. Um, a lot of us like to think we're Loraxes and we speak for the trees, uh, which is why we got into parks initially. And then, uh, you know, we reviewed kind of the, the entry to Port Silicon Park, had numerous Eagle Scout projects. Uh, another hugely successful Parks Appreciation Day. And then we've met with the Planning Commission on that urban forestry program. And so I still, like I say, a lot of these will carry over into next year, but Vito will talk about this year's work plan.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, yeah, a lot of these continued from two thousand and twenty-two to this year. Um, so it's kind of repetitive to some degree, but we just dive deeper, right? Discuss it further. Uh, the Squali Partnership Projects Updates, uh, and that's a moving target. There's going to be more, um, as per input and staff as they make progress. Uh, Parks and Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP update, uh, that's coming in the next, uh, and they're ongoing, right? There's a lot of capital projects moving. Uh, we heard from and we discussed the diversity, equity and inclusion in parks and recreation, how important that is. Um, earlier week, last, last fall, we started it and then we finished it this year. Um, of course, the senior center update is very important and we'll probably dive into that in the fall again. Of course, the, the need for a location and space is very important for that senior center uh or a senior program. Special events updates, um, special events are real important to uh Parks and Recreation and they're doing more and more every year. So we're going to hear that. Uh, street ends, like Jason had mentioned, um, that was a good dive early in the year uh on what are we going to do with street ends and what's the most important ones to maybe focus on and prioritize. Uh, park signage update, um, and staff's working on it and part of that um on wayfinding and how they all mesh. And so we have a unified signage program. First, the big topic, the Climate Change Initiative and the Tree Preservation Ordinance. And I guess we'll spend most of our time maybe chatting about that. Park code site facility naming process, um, that's on the docket again to look at that and fine tune that. And then future expansion opportunities at Camp Murray Historic Port Silicon Site. So that's kind of our agenda and work plan for two twenty-three.
Open for questions? Or is there any other portions?
Uh, I guess the, the big thing is, uh, is maybe spend time and energy debating and discussing. You know, we're helping you.
Absolutely.
Advisory.
Doing a great job.
And, and, uh, you know, how can we best help this? There are some big topics here that we need to get through and how's the best way to approach it? So I, that's a question.
No, it's a great question.
Uh, the climate, the climate change initiative and the tree preservation are big topics.
Well, big topics for sure. And you know, maybe we can kind of go down the components of the work plan and maybe just throw out suggestions or have roundtable discussion on points that might give you that help. For example, you know, the Nisqually Partnership Project Update, we heard from our, our lobbyist Shelley Heldur that we were successful in getting three hundred and what was it, three hundred and nine thousand dollars for that? And I look at that, I think that's a lot of money for us some signage. So my, I guess my question is, what can we, should we do with that partnership to really make something significant and, and meaningful uh for that level of investment? You probably haven't really had a chance to really dig into it yet, but just kind of an open thought. You know, you, you guys are the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, you're kind of out there. What do you think would make an impact with that kind of money in partnership with the tribe?
Yeah, and for me, it's just personally, it's, you know, there's been talk of developing kind of that legacy trail that's associated with it. And uh, if there's a way to commemorate that, it's, it's bringing people along that trail, interpreting that trail and, and kind of that thing. And that's how, how you pass on that knowledge and that education to the future generations and, and the generations that don't know about it currently.
I'm sure Mary's probably got a plan for community outreach where you guys will be instrumental in kind of culling that uh feedback from the public and perhaps even some volunteers it might help because we use them so greatly in the city to leverage the resources we do get. It may help with that kind of path creation, but um, those kinds of things. But I'm, I'm really interested to see how this comes together because you got to do it right, obviously. And you guys are very helpful in making sure we do those things right.
Um, I think I, I used to work with um children, teaching them their, um, their culture. I was hired by the Callets, down in the Callets to do this a long time ago. And I, I don't know why they chose me, but I got trained. And, um, you know, it's their nations and, and they're, when you, when we foster a, a relationship with these, this, these other nations, it's just like having a sister city or something. You can share what's good, you can share the history. And the people who live here now, they will say, you're living on our land. Well, this is true. Um, how can we best be good stewards together? Um, those kinds of issues that we can, we can address at the parks in a very friendly way. And as long as they are willing to come to us, I think, um, it's just really a good, a good thing.
Yeah, and how do we physically and demonstrably memorialize the story and the history, right? I mean, that's the beautiful thing that people want to be able to go up and read something and see it or interact with it, I think.
Yeah, I would ask them, you know, how they, how would you like this to be? How would you feel honored? And how can we, um, how can we respect you?
Absolutely. Mr. Anderson, you had a point?
Yeah, I, where I personally like input on that is whether there should be some focal point. I think that the pathway and stations is a good thing, but wouldn't want it to just be like you're going to the golf course and here's the first home marker, here's the second home marker and it tells the story as you go along. That there has to be a focal point, you know, but something that's different than that. Uh, so that uh maybe it draws people in, maybe it's the place they end up. I, I don't have any brilliant ideas except that I think it needs to be considered before we drive stakes in the ground and put eighteen holes in.
On that point, I agree with you. You know, we're in this process of defining what might go in the H Barn and maybe the area that's going to remain somewhat historic. That could be an interpretive center itself. You could have really cool, you know, these, these kiosks you see at the History Museum and others uh probably have a cost, but they're a really great way to have a place that provides interactive education that can easily be updated, changed, whatever, uh, that's engaging for students, you know, families, those kinds of things. And so your path idea is great, but I agree with Mr. Anderson, something that's constructive and significant that honors the story in a very interactive way in a place that's going to be enhanced and open to the public, I think would be a great thing to plan for in the H Barn. Possibly, right, Mary? Go ahead and come on up, please. Because that, that might also attract investment by folks who want to donate to the project.
Right, and, and we'll give you a full briefing on this topic soon, but I just wanted to let you know we've been working with the Nisqually Tribe for the last four years through COVID on this project to get to a point where we were ready to look at the, um, for some support from the state legislature. So there's been sort of action, but there is anticipated an artwork, piece of artwork that will sort of set the stage um and probably focusing on Chief Leshy. And they're really focusing on his legacy as in utilizing his words to tell the story about who they are today and not focusing on some of the negative things in the back. So they're really excited about that. Of course, council will have approval on everything. And then the interpretive elements are not just going to be a book on a stick, so to speak, or a, a, um, a flag in the sand. It will really be a variety of ways of, of really informing them on their culture and we're letting, utilizing their language and really being able to teach our community a lot more about this tribe that is an active, thriving tribe in our community. So, so there's quite a few things in progress, but, um, you know, as to bring all the people together with a package that not only meets our budget, um, but that is, um, telling the story that, that they want to tell and that we want to share. So in an appropriate fashion. So more of that will be coming to you in some sort of an MOU and then of course approval for whatever we implement. So the park board will be getting briefed on it, provide some other input and then of course coming to you as we normally do on these types of projects.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you all for being here and what you do for parks. I really appreciate it. You do very innovative recommendations. Like you said, we're here to help. So one of the things I was thinking of a great tie-in between the Nisqually Partnership and then down on number seven, our Park Sign Project. I definitely think the Nisqually Partnership Project needs to be very original, but it's also another opportunity for us to grow on what we've talked a lot about is creating our brand and our identity for the ci- for the city. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted and I would love that to somehow be tied in. You know, we've talked a lot about that our signage doesn't need to be identical, but it needs to look like it's a part of the same family. So that's what I would encourage with that. I'd love to see that. And I also echo Councilmember Anderson's, um, point on a really nice focal point for that. And I think that would be a good, yeah. Thank you. Up, always up, like.
City manager's not listening. Exactly, intentionally. So the urban forestry program presentation you heard, certainly you got an overview on it and it ties in. What's your thought about it just in general? And how that, that plays into what you've already got in your work plan, which is our Climate Change Initiative and Tree Preservation Ordinance? What do you think? Interesting concept? Good concept?
Yeah, I, I, I think it was good. There was a lot of information that was shared. And at the Planning Commission, when we saw it the first time, we heard it the first time, it was a tremendous amount. Um, and how, how do we weed through it to get to where we need to get? Uh, the, you know, I think we're all interested personally um to help with the tree preservation code, urban forestry, all of that. I think parks are part of that. Um, we also have a full agenda. So how do we, how do we blend that? How do we, you know, how do we help, but at the same time get some of these other important things and, um, done and completed? So that's the challenge.
Understood. Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Branson.
I think maybe it's under the Capital Improvement Plan and I don't know how much has been conveyed to you, but there, there's been we'd call a somewhat of a breakthrough in our communications with Camp Murray regarding the possibility of making improvements to the, uh, what is it, Fish and Wildlife Boat Launch Area. And so, um, they in relinquishing control of the area to us, if they do, would obviously have some very defined requirements, but uh at some point, we're going to want uh your input and public input on what should be done at that location. The goal being to create greater access for the people of Lakewood through the lakes. So, uh, that's something where we have an opportunity where we can expand potentially expand the park system without having to buy land, which is, which on the lake is prohibited, of course. And the other one that goes along with that is, um, is Edgewater Park, because we have the same goal is gaining access to the lake and whether it's a I've always thought, for example, that it would be a good idea to get some backlands if there was a possibility of acquiring parking. Uh, you'd have to buy something off the lake and tear houses down, but, um, it's, but that's another, but in other words, the very limited opportunities we have to create better, better lake access for the public. So, uh, well, we're talking about the two things that are in our name really, which is the lake and the woods. Uh, and, and so I think that those should be vocal points.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I would encourage you as a group to really talk about your, your role in the urban forestry program and, and whether you have the capacity to take that on or whether you would recommend to us that we form a, an urban forestry advisory committee as was, uh, one of the options that was presented by, by the students to do that. Uh, given that it's, 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 it's not a short term, but it's a long-term, ongoing uh, ongoing effort and, uh, you see how you're doing. I, I, I think, uh, in, uh, you know, in, 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 a- along the lines of the fact that, you know, um, lots of us get full plates, you know, it's in, you know, and, and sometimes the solution is to buy a bigger plate. That, uh, you know, the, uh, and, and the, uh, the, the city went out and spent a dollar and bought the old settler's cemetery on Washington Boulevard from Pierce County. Um, and there is another opportunity not to create a recreational site, but to create a site that is educational and respective of history. To be able to go and do that, that, uh, that, that needs, uh, needs a plan and probably some engagement with the nearby community to be able to, uh, to do that. Uh, um, perhaps not on the scale as within the Squalies, but in, 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 in the same vein to, uh, um, not lose, uh, lose the history of that. And I see you're already looking at what we might do with, uh, in partnership with others. The, uh, Historic Port Silicon area is the DSHS seeks to contract their footprint, uh, of, of, of what, what, what they're doing. And I think one other thing that I, I would suggest that you take a look at when we took your work um and, and the work that we had and we also looked at the street ends as we've done a decade ago and, and, and now to do that. And, um, you, 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 we, we like the possibilities that we saw, both the possibilities. You, 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 we, we like the possibilities that we saw, both the possibilities of. Street ends that could be divested, but also ones that could be developed. And uh, it was a consensus of the council at that meeting that uh. You know, beginning in the next biennium and that can't do everything at once, but to try to. Bring a street end into public use and developing it one each biennium going forward over. Over time. But we didn't prioritize. Them, I think some, some work as to what might be the. The one in twenty-four, twenty-five and what might be the one in. Twenty-six, twenty-seven is a, some advice that we would uh. You know, appreciate getting, getting from you. Yeah, given both the, the idea that we, we'd like ones to be used, but we want to, we definitely want to increase. Uh, the public's ability to access our lakes. That is something that we hear. Quite often, the, the lakes are here and they're nice, but they're hard for everyone to access to them. And uh. So we just want to get started on that as an ongoing. Given the number of street ends, decades long. Uh, lo- long project, uh, but also not keep street ends in the, in, in, in the inventory that that just isn't. Isn't a role they can play. So um, you know, I uh. Look, look, uh, you know, look, look forward to um, we were real successful with the legislature in terms of the. Funding towards Lake Park and things to do that. And a lot of that is due to. Mary and, and, but also with your, your guidance, this is sort of to structure those plans that made sense to people in Olympia that they would. Were looking to invest into them. But uh. Wouldn't like you to have some serious discussions about options, both in terms of locations and the type and how to get to a facility for a senior center. Because um, that uh, that's the kind of thing. We can go to the legislature and ask for if we, if we, if we, if we could put together a, a good. Good thought and a proposal in terms of what, what to be able to go and do that. So uh. That um, you know, you will just, I, I don't know whether we need to order you, the bigger plate or just a, a place setting where you have, 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 have. Have a number of plates that you, for all of your table. Thank, thank you for being here and thank you for being here throughout the year.
Speaking of plates, I think Mr. Bransett wants you to practice spinning them. A lot of different ones. Yes, welcome. Good to see you.
Um, from the. Um, from the presentation, I saw that. They were thinking of planting new trees within Lakewood. Um, I think that's a great idea. I think that there's like to move trees within Lakewood to like replant trees, because there is trees that are like a dan- danger hazard. To um, the community, um, like there's trees that's close to the like, the. The, I forgot what it's called, but it's like. It's next to a pool and it's like a electricity lining and like close to houses. And um, close to like road closures that can like block the roads. Um, in my area, there was trees that got removed due to high winds. That the tree would just blow like so loud, you can hear it inside your house. And um, they, I'm glad they got those removed because it could have been a safety hazard to where I live.
It's all part of a good forestry management program, right? Knowing what you have and trying to maintain safely.
Are there any plans for the city to remove trees within the communities that are a danger hazard?
Typically. Within city right of way, city takes a good look at things that are brought to its attention that are. A danger. I know, for example, over by Park Lodge, there was a large limb that broke off an oak tree that fell down on the sidewalk. And so the city. Cleaned that up and made sure it was appropriately trimmed, but I think I couldn't say for sure, but our public works directors back there, I would assume Mr. Bucic, that we. Look for dangerous trees in the public right of way, and when appropriate, we take care of them. He's nodding his head, yes. Can't do it on private property, um, but certainly people can now have a, well, they have a process to get a permit. With the advice of an arborist as to whether or not a tree is dangerous on their own property, and then they can have it removed appropriately, but on public property, we take care of that on our, our own.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's good to see you. Thank you for your participation.
Um, could I just talk about forestry for a moment?
Sure.
Um, that's what I, that's what my degree is in. It's what I used to teach. So when you have a forest and a forest management plan, which is one of the goals. You manage for forests are managed for timber production. They're managed for wildlife corridors. They're managed for recreation. The purpose is in our purpose is where's canopy. So I think we need to be really specific that it's canopy we're after. Okay? So we're going to want things that survive and make shade and, and help the climate, because that's our purpose. It's not to beautify our, our city. It's not to. Provide recreation necessarily, but it's, it's our goal is managing for the climate. So when you look at a piece of forest land and you've got your goal, you need to look at. Like they said, the management units, everything is so different. We have um, a forest that. Underneath the canopy consists of private land and streets and parks and schools and other public lands and commercial land. And surface water management land. And all of these types of lands, all these management units are going to have different um, regulations and. And limitations on them already. So from, it's going to be, it's going to require a lot of coordination. Amongst the, the various parts of our city in order to grow canopy. And then, so I just want us to be aware of that, just um, I think we need to figure out the need, there's a need for a person who can do this kind of. Coordination. And I think that the forestry program needs to be housed in the part of the city that. Is most efficient at reaching into all of the, these different um, agency agent parts of our city. The other part in most. Most forest management plans don't require the giant amount that we're going to need for um, tell, selling the public. On this and telling them how trees grow. Um, they may want to, to, like, for example, we may want to encourage. Don't get an invasive species. Well, they don't even know what that word invasive species means. We have a huge amount of education. In front of us in order to be, become a city that's green and has enough forest canopy. So um. That's, those are my comments, and I think it's, it's a, it's a big job, and I feel like our board would be. Happy, but maybe totally swamped to do it.
I appreciate that, Jan. Just, just because you do have that background and expertise. Do you have any, any thoughts on? How an urban forestry uh, program. Necessarily addresses the dichotomy I spoke of, of the Hobson's choice. With increased density for housing. Uh, vis a vis increase in the canopy and or, you know, dealing with necessary improvements in the public right of way. For example, we're doing. The entrance to Port Silicon Park, as you know, we're doing the trail along Elwood, as you know, which was recommended to do. Trees are coming down there. We, we get excoriated by some saying, how dare you talk about increasing the tree canopy when you're taking down mature trees? So there's this constant balance, right?
Yeah, I, I think we're probably going to end up majoring on trees that really produce canopy versus height. So we may have lots more um, broadleafs that lose their, their limbs in the fall, or not their limbs. So like their limbs, their leaves, their leaves, um, they may be shorter. Um, if we focus on the canopy and not the number of trees on a piece of property or the, or even the diameter. Um, but the canopy cover, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for climate. We're looking for clean air and shade. Okay, so, so it's different than these just giant towering furs that we have.
Right.
Um, and to your point, uh. Councilman Anderson, this is one of the best places to grow Douglas fir. This is like almost site one land. It's not good for growing other things, you know, but, but man, we could, we can grow fur. We can grow furs here. Yeah, right, right.
That's a great point, though, about uh, part of the education piece. That maybe could be a component that you participate in with a, another subcommittee, so you're not overloaded is. What it truly means to grow a canopy. It's not just about the number of trees. It's the right species that works. It's the right species that creates. Uh, you know, the leaves that absorb the chlorophyll, all that sort of stuff and the carbon.
If we had a, say we had a choice to, you could plant a fir or a madrona. Let's plant a madrona. It's going to get bigger and, and more leaves, more, lots more um, surface area there. Um, forget your, forget your slow growing hemlocks, you know, or even your slow growing garyoaks and just make them the stars, but have some of our faster growing. Plant some big leaf maples, big leaf maples, you know, they, they look lovely. They grow quickly here. Um, they get big fat, fast.
Absolutely. Excellent point.
I'm not an urban forester. Okay, so, so they, they, they will, I don't want to be, and they will know even more.
Yeah, that sounds good. Ellen, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to echo her uh. Thought that really to administer this on the city's level, we're going to need an employee. I mean, there's, there's no two ways about it. Well, there's multiple ways of funding and they gave you several options. Uh, if you develop a. Urban forestry board, I think you'll find some of us will also serve on that, or if it's thrown to us, we will, you know, take it on the best we can. I know Mary is swamped. She's up doing everything she possibly can, but it is an important thing. And I think the council has set a culture where this becomes. Important and a focus for the, the city. Uh, and if you go back to the ad hoc committee report where the tree code was developed. There are some things in there that point out that really development and tree enhancement are not at opposite ends. There are things like uh, altering setbacks for building permits to allow a tree to exist and things like that. And I think we just need to develop a culture where that becomes what we're thinking about, not strictly building this house we need, but. Well, how can we situate this house to preserve a tree? Simple things like that will, will increase our, our canopy in the long run too.
Well, things like flexibility and side yard setbacks and, you know, variance opportunities that are administrative in nature. I get it. Yep. Well, this has been fun. Good conversation. Jason?
Yeah, I just got, I've got a few more things. And so I just. Remind us, uh, the city council and, and this group, I mean, two years ago, we couldn't even have this meeting because we were locked in a pandemic. And I think something that we came out of the pandemic was a true appreciation in parks. That was the only place we could seem to get out and get some respite. And so let's not get too far away from that pandemic and, and keep and hold on to that value of parks because. Uh, the next pandemic could just be right around the corner. And so. Uh, continued investments in the Parks Department, staffing and the maintenance of it is hugely important. Uh, one thing I was going to come out of tonight's meeting was a little bit more direction on the street ends. Uh, it's been a topic we've delved in many times, and so I appreciate some of that clarification, councilmember Ben Bransett there. Uh, that gives us uh, something to work on and, and give you meaningful uh, information back or, or prioritization. Um, as we've all talked about the tree program, the tree program is hugely important to this board. Like I say, we all feel like we speak for the trees on a certain level. And so um. Uh, I think the number one thing in consideration, considering I'm trying to implement an urban forestry program uh, in King County and city of federal way. Uh, it, it's going to need dedicated full-time staff and the program coordination is absolutely essential. Uh, that is not other duties is assigned that Mary can take on. It's, it's, it's just too much. And um, that's where I think there's a little. It's uh, students that put together that report and, and don't maybe have some of the real world context, but I thought their report was phenomenal. I thought that group did, did an excellent job. Um, but it's not just one FTE for the urban forestry program. I think you need that program coordinator that ties all the departments together. Um, the expertise in bars, arbor culture, that sort of thing, that can be contracted out, but. Um, you want to minimize that. You don't have the ownership or the buy-in when you're contracting it out. They're gonna, they're gonna execute a task for you, a specific task you've given them, and that's about it. And so. Um, I think you can tap a little bit of the knowledge that's already in the Parks Department. Uh, and I don't know. Uh, you know, like at my park, I've got several certified arborists where we bounce on that, where we use the contract arborist is to shift liability. And, and that should be a, a, a factor in a consideration. Um, so staffing, I think, is the hugest thing for that. I think a secondary board uh, is probably the right way to go because this parks board is, is. Pretty jam-packed and, and got a lot of work. And, and like Alan said, I concur that uh, many of us would probably want to, want to serve on that board as well. I think a major uh, factor and thing that hasn't been talked about when it comes to the tree program is. The actual climate change that is currently occurring and drought conditions. I know in federal way and, and, and the state as a whole. Uh, we've got big problems with maple trees and a, and a black fungus that we can't identify. And just look anywhere up and down the I five corridor and look at cedar trees. Cedar trees are struggling and struggling hard right now. And that's. Uh, the best I can, can help. And, and we've been working with WSU Extension Campus. Uh, to try to study that. It's, it's the drought conditions and that and, and having that, that uh, impact on the trees. And so not only. Do we need to be planting and increasing our canopy, but we need to be um. Trying to outsmart the environmental factors, which uh, anytime I've uh, seen a human try to outsmart uh, environment or, or nature, uh, nature generally wins. Um, but um, another strategy is, is we need to be looking more towards, talk about the increased density. And it's moving to more columnar trees being they grow more straight up. You can have columnar trees that have. Uh, high leaf con- concentration, that sort of thing. So I think that's one of the avenues to be looking at. So on the tr- uh, tree program, our, our senior center and our senior program. Uh, we need to help them. They need a home. They need a home bad. It's been too many years without a home. And um, we got to get creative, find a funding source and find them a home. Elizabeth puts on a, a fantastic program. She's kept that program intact through a pandemic and without a home. And uh, let's do her a little bit of favor and get her a place to, to run that program so it can be as successful as it's always been. And then um, lastly, the one I want to hit on is just, just general staffing for the city of Lakewood. Uh. All of our employees in the city of Lakewood wear multiple hats. They all have extra duties as assigned, well above and beyond what their job description says. And so we need to, to think about trying to backfill and fill some of those gaps. So staff can have a chance to breathe. Fully, you know, work on their, on their positions. And I know that's difficult when you have. Uh, CPI indexes going up and, and salary wages to, to match with that, but. Uh, that's kind of why you guys are in the chairs you're in, is you guys got to, got to make some of those difficult decisions and, and that. But um. Uh, staffing, I think, is an issue and retention of that staffing is uh, loss of institutional knowledge costs the city more than uh. You can calculate on paper or put down. And so um, I know from my standpoint, I, I value and cherish my role. You guys engage us, listen to us, our opinions feel valued. And that's why I think you see so many of us continue to serve year after year is because of that cooperation between the parks board and the city council. And we actually are getting results. You guys are doing a great job and, and we appreciate that. With that, I say thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
I'd just like to leave you with a, an anecdote about tree equity here. You know, our, our less tree canopied areas generally are. Lower rent apartments are more dense. There is that were paved over before it was a city, but you've got the most. Coverage that you could get and that's cheaper. And so people move there. It isn't that people cut down trees in low income areas. It's they created. Lower income or, or lower cost housing and people with lower incomes gravitated there. So I'm something to think about. I'm flying into San Antonio. I thought the council is, but I fly into San Antonio. Uh, about two years ago, and I looked down as we're approaching the airport and I see. Uh, a line of demarcation or mention. You know, you're from Dominican Republic and you can see from space, you can see Haiti's un- forested and deforested and has no topsoil and. Bright line Dominican Republic didn't cut down all the trees to use, use them for charcoal and they're much better off. Looks the same. There's housing over here and there are really no trees. There's housing over here. I think there's housing in there from the sky and until I get lower, I can't tell there is. It's very forested. I think that's a upscale area. And it's just the opposite. The new housing. And it's just the opposite. The new housing was taken out of un-irrigated. Uh, open space and had very little with brand new, nice housing. It had very little uh. Vegetation other than grass. The older housing were very simple, probably two-bedroom, lower working class type neighborhood. Very. And now, more than fifty years later, it's probably even lower income. It had been built pre-air conditioner. And every home had a couple of shade trees on the south side. So that whole area was canopied. Uh, and it was a remarkable difference. You want to talk about carbon sinks, heat sinks, whatever. Uh, people adapted to it pre-air conditioning and. You could safely say they kind of did it right. So we have to look out both our. Development of single-family houses, which is basically infill, but also apartments so that when. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to achieve any equitable result. Uh, unless we we get some good recommendations on how to do that. In the face of mandated overrides from legislature that we've got to make everything look like a condo project and see.
But I think that's might be a component of the the urban forestry plan that's not there is is how do we get those. Low income and and the D E I into the tree program and um, you know. Uh, whether that's a percentage of it or uh some sort of program, but. You're right, a lot of those areas here don't have the tree canopy. And so how do we get that included? So we we uh fix that inequity.
Any other questions, comments? Well, it's I think it's been a great conversation. I appreciate it. Um, and I I know you guys recognize. The incredible work Mary has done to get grants and to help us frame our legislative agenda. So that we can continue to invest millions of dollars in our parks. So we we. We take it seriously, as you well know, and we're very proud of it uh through your help and recommendations. So that's a great thing. Only comment on the street ends is I'd have to go back to the conversation we have that flowed from your recommendations because I think we tentatively identified. Uh, someone still come Lake and it should likely be improved. So I wouldn't want you to reinvent the wheel, but maybe Mary can help you. With, yeah, those notes so that you can talk about what kinds of improvements should be done to really make them. Uh, the accessible access to the lakes that it can be. So there were a couple on Lake Stillcome and. Certainly, Mr. Anderson identified the main one now on American Lake. It would be appropriate, which is really the wildlife. Uh, department's boat launch that we hope to kind of assume responsibility for and make it improved. The ten-year program. Right, exactly. So those are some good things. And and we're working on some projects with regard to Edgewater currently. That we hope will make a difference there. So you'll probably know about that sooner than later. Okay, if there's no further ado, I'm I'm pleased that Ms. Bingath has been named the uh new chair of the. Urban Forestry Program Board Advisory Committee. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, good to see you all. So why don't we take a five-minute recess so we can get up, stretch, get some water before we talk about. A five-hundred-year flood. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back for a review of the Clover Creek Engineering Alternatives Evaluation Report from Mr. Bucic. So I'll turn it over. It's nine eighteen-ish. I think we want to give ourselves um. You know, up to forty-five minutes for this topic, if necessary, up to ten o'clock, but I think I'd like to try to. End the meeting on or before ten o'clock if we can. So be mindful of your questions and comments. And if we need to set more of this over for another study session, which I think is likely, we're going to be able to do that. Mr. Bucic.
Well, good evening. I can be done in five minutes.
Wow, all right.
I'm just kidding. Um, first off, on the screen is actually the presentation that you saw two months ago. So there's nothing new in there. In fact, the date is still the same. But since I know you have an awful lot that goes in front of you, not only in the council, but also in your personal lives. And professional work lives, I wanted to make sure that I brought that up. Went through it at a very high level to refresh your minds, the conversation we had the last time. Before I get into that, though, I want to set the groundwork ground for you a little bit here. Because the last time we met, there was a lot of questions. Leading me to believe that there's not a good understanding of what the Clover Creek Drainage Basin is. Um, I was questioned whether we should do something different. I was questioned whether we should rely on Pierce County and a bunch of other things. Whether we should, and it has been a lot of comments and submittals to council members about the low flows in Clover Creek. Questions about why are you even looking at habitat? There's no flow in the creek or whatnot. So I wanted to just spend a few minutes with you, giving you some more background on Clover Creek. The first thing I want you to know is that unincorporated Pierce County alone. Clover Creek main channel plus all the side channels is almost forty miles in length. Within J B L M is about two and a half miles, of which a half a mile of that creek is in twelve-foot diameter pelverts. The rest of it is twelve foot deep, two channels. So it's not really habitat in the habitat perspective. Within the city of Lakewood, from where it comes into our jurisdictional boundaries to where it hits span away, our Silicon Lake, sorry, wrong lake. Silicon Lake is two-point-four miles. So we have forty miles in unincorporated Pierce County. We have two-point-four miles in our city limits. The drainage basin that feeds into Clover Creek is about approximately forty-five thousand acres. Okay, that's a lot of acreage. The county and the Pierce County Health Department have been analyzing Clover Creek for decades. Um, back in nineteen ninety-four, Pierce County Surface Water Management created a. A plan for the entire county that included Clover Creek. And they identified a series of regional stormwater facilities to be built upstream, well upstream of where. The city of Lakewood is. Of course, back in ninety-four, Lakewood was a part of unincorporated Pierce County. They also did identify that there was likely some flooding problems down in Clover Creek, which is where the city sits. There were no plans at that time to come forward and do any solutions to those problems. The the that's where the flooding was occurring on a regular basis. That also, I know that from personal experience because that was the timeframe when I worked for Pierce County uh Surface Water Management. I know where the focus was at that time. In the early two thousands, the Health Department made a big push. And all these documents, basically three big ones right here are the Pierce County Health Department's. Assessment of the Clover and Clover Chambers watershed. The Clover Chambers watershed is much larger than just the Clover watershed, Clover Creek. It's a subset of the bigger watershed. It includes Tacoma. It includes areas all the way down to the to the Puyallup River, basically, and all the way over, I think it's to Mud Creek. Um, I'm not entirely sure about that limit on that side. Their focus, however, was on water quality and potable water. In nineteen ninety-seven, at that time, when they did an assessment, there were a hundred and sixty-eight thousand people. In the Clover Creek drainage basin that relied on groundwater for their potable water supply. That was twenty-six years ago. I have no question that the number of people who live within the Clover um Creek Drainage Basin. That it's exceedingly more than a hundred and sixty-eight thousand people. Those people rely on public water supply systems, which have wells that are typically in the hundred and fifty to a thousand-foot depth range. They are not shallow wells. Um, they go deep because they have more consistency on water supply. Our state also allows um exempt wells, the single-family homes. And this basin has a number of them. Those are those are exempt wells that don't require any kind of permits. Um, and it was quite prevalent when there was not a water purveyor to provide potable water. Or even if there was, but it costs too much to bring the potable water to them because they had to pay for the infrastructure. For people to go out and hire a well driller and drop a well into the ground and use that as their water supply. So those wells range in depth from fifty feet to three hundred feet, depending upon where the water table was. I can tell you that there's portions of the county out there that the water table is basically five feet below the ground. And in some cases during certain times of the year, a three or four feet above the ground. So it depends on where you're at and how you're tapping into that that aquifer or which aquifers you're tapping into. I bring that up because some of the concerns that I've heard expressed um have been, well. The water purveyors are draining all of our water, and that's causing a problem for us on Clover Creek. They are taking water at different aquifer levels and depths. But there's also many thousands of septic drain fields in that area because the Pierce County sewer. Does not extend all of Clover Creek. So they're taking the water out of the ground, they're running it through their house, doing what they need to, putting it in the septic drain field, and that drains into the upper aquifer. So it it's almost a, um, I'm not going to say it's a perfect match, you know, take water taken out, water going in. But there is something that occurs there. When Pierce County has come in with their sewers in the past historically. And they take that water away. That has historically been going down into the to the upper aquifer. There are studies that show in some areas, it's three to six foot, even nine foot drop in the groundwater table. In those areas, when the sewer comes in. Now, one would argue, could very likely argue. That that is bringing it more to a more natural condition because you're not artificially taking the the deeper. Water, putting into a septic drain field and surcharging the upper aquifer. Okay, so that's information I want you to be aware of. When I was talking about the size of the basin, about forty-five thousand acres, that's the superficial topography. That's that means you can go out there and you can map where the highs and the lows are, and you can see the area that drains into that. What that doesn't address is the size of the groundwater, what they call the groundwater watershed, okay? That's significantly larger. So when you talk about figuring out what's going on with groundwater out in this basin, it is complicated. And it is not something that we could lightly entertain doing unto ourselves. The good news is that we don't have to because Pierce County has already started that effort. But they're doing it for a different reason, not doing it because they're focusing on just the groundwater in Clover Creek. Now, they're doing it because um Clover Creek itself is on what's known as the State three oh three D listed for impaired water body. Now, what that means is that the state goes through and they do an assessment of all of our water bodies, whether that be streams or whether that be lakes. And they determine from, in some cases, volunteer information, which they're not supposed to use according to their own protocols, but they do. And they also base on other studies, whether it be Health Department or a jurisdiction that does a study. And they determined, oh, well, that's not meeting state water quality standards. A typical one is for fecal coliform. Uh, another one is for temperature now, which didn't used to be one that they paid much attention to. And then there's other water quality parameters. The state has got many water bodies, many, many water bodies that are on the three oh three D list. And there's different categories of impairment. Pierce County has looked at Clover Creek and said, we want to help address the problem we have on Clover Creek on a three oh three D list. So they have actually created an alternative. It's called the Clover Creek Alternative Plan. To address the impairments on Clover Creek. And through that, they're proposing to do groundwater modeling, surface water modeling. Um, there's it's a series of like six different, very complicated modeling. Um, protocols and and programs that they plan on using that tie together. Now, that's not cheap. So they're looking at, for the first phase of the work, it's two years and one-point-two million dollars to set that up. And that's using a lot of existing monitoring wells. Um, I've in the past mentioned to them, if you want a couple of monitoring wells in Clover Creek. Talk to us. We'll see what we can do to help you get those in, or even if we can propose to put them in because they're not going to be very deep, but they have not. Um, the next body of work is straight to implementation, which is what can they do? They know that a lot of the septic drain fields are causing problems for various pollutants, if you will. Water quality parameters going into the upper aquifer that's draining into the creek. They have a couple of projects on Capitol Side that they've been wanting to do for some time, and they also listed this, the three of them. Those projects are all told about four and a half million dollars, four and a half to five million dollars that they're already planning on doing. This plan is in front of Ecology right now, and they have not heard back from Ecology since October of twenty twenty-two. What I find interesting is that they mentioned in there that the city of Lakewood is an important partner in that, and yet we never got a chance to review this. So. I, I, I know we didn't review it because I've never seen it and frankly, there are some things in there that I would never have written that way. That's just me. So that's why I know the city of Lakewood has not touched this. Not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying it's, it's a great effort, it's a big effort, it's going to take thousands of staff time, hours of staff time to do this work. But at least they have a six-year plan to get started on. In two thousand and three. They actually did. A, the Clover Creek Basin Plan. For the first time that I've seen other than the nineteen ninety-four study they did. They actually identified the flooding problems that we have in Clover Creek. Because we had them in ninety-six, ninety-seven. Okay. Um, what they don't do, though, is in this plan, identify any solutions. Because they identified the basin problems, but when it comes to incorporated areas like city of Lakewood. They stay silent on the things that need to be done. In two thousand and three, the city completed an engineering report. On Clover Creek flood abatement feasibility study because of the ninety-six, ninety-seven flood that occurred. Um, that flood occurred primarily because there was a lot of rain on snow that melted very quickly. But this analysis shows that that event that occurred right around the apartment complex, right before you get to Bridgeport on the right-hand side, looking downstream. They call that anywhere from a fourteen-year to a twenty-five-year flood event. The work that we have done is we came back in and we said. We think the floodplain may be wrong. Turned out to be wrong in the wrong direction for what we thought. It showed that the floodplain is actually far more extensive. Than even what FEMA had modeled in twenty-twelve that got adopted in twenty-seventeen. There's a whole bunch of national issues that went on to cause a delay on that. What we came up with, we says, is this something reasonable and feasible for us to even entertain? And then if so, if there's a solution, who needs to partner with the city of Lakewood to solve this? What I found also interesting in looking at some of the files that we have. Is a nineteen seventy-six Clover Creek Basin Drainage Plan done by Konzer Towns and Associates. Nineteen seventy-six. The really strange and ironic thing for me is the very first page I opened it up to was a graphic. That showed the recommendations. On what they said that should happen in Clover Creek, right down our neighborhood. I've done this twice, I'm going to see if I can do it again. I probably won't because, you know, that's just the way things goes. And here's the graphic. And I'm going to just read to you the recommended improvements. From JBLM base down to Silicon Lake. In the Springbrook area, they recommend the construction of a dike. Which is a levee. Between I five and Pac Highway, they recommend the construction of a dike. You go downstream of that and they have a recommendation for two additional dikes. In nineteen seventy-six, before the degree of development that occurred with Inclaver Creek. Has occurred. Their recommendation at that time for that area for dikes. That's pretty much where we landed when we looked at what, what feasible options that we have. Now. There's a whole series of additional recommendations upstream. That go along with that, that are detention facilities. Big detention facilities, and I know that Pierce County has built a number of them. But even with that, even with that, in nineteen seventy-six, they recommended the construction of dikes. We now use the term levees. So I wanted to share that with you because I think it's important and relevant to the conversation to say. This system has been studied, it's been studied for a wide variety of, of different reasons. Water quality and groundwater and water supply are the big ones that the Health Department got involved in. Pierce County analyzed it at different points in time because of flooding and other drainage issues. Even as recently as two thousand and three, now, they picked out. For us, our big one is the Clover Creek flooding. And a couple of other minor uh areas that we, we took care of them a long time ago. So that being said, that gives you a little more of a, of a background. Um, in the Clover Chambers or the Chambers Clover Creek. Groundwater model. And this includes everything in Tacoma, too. Is three hundred and four thousand acres or four, four hundred and ninety-one square miles. When the question comes forward to me, well, should Lakewood take the lead on this? I posed to you that Lakewood has three people doing surface water, and I'm the most experienced person here. Okay. Um, we don't have the capabilities, but we can certainly be involved with Pierce County on this as we move forward. Pierce County is developing the groundwater model, the surface water model, and the water quality model. That we will be engaged in working with them on, and I, I am quite confident that they will be interacting and engaging with the different water purveyors. In the watershed, too. They've also got the USGS and their modeling capability helping on this, too. What I'm looking at through this was what do we do about the flooding? So I'm not focusing on the groundwater, on how, how the creek is drying up or not drying up. By the way, one of the older reports also shows that that's been something going on ever since the creek was relocated. And at the time they relocated, they broke the seal on the bottom of it. So this stretch through Lakewood is known as a losing stream. There's gaining reaches, losing reaches, and transitional, and their. Current proposal to analyze things. Clarifies or quantifies our portion of it as a losing stream. And it's also an intermittent stream. It means it, it's not flowing year round. Um, there are habitat features of our system that are important when the water's flowing, when fish can get through. There are times of year when those habitat features will not be used by fish, but they will be used by terrestrial animals. That the fish will in, in the future rely on because of their, their carcasses. Which rely, which are part of the food change chain, that when the water comes back in and they break apart, and the macroinverter bits that the fish will feed on. Will feed on those carcasses and also any detritus that falls from the leaves above and bugs that fall into the creek. Their analysis is also the two thousand and three report, I should, there's a lot of them, so I beg your pardon if I forget to mention which one, but two thousand and three report. identifies that there are a series of concrete dams on our creek, in our, in our, our stretch. Um, and they have fish ladders. And they were quite straightforward that those fish ladders are too small. And they can't pass the fish. They do not drive enough water through them to attract the fish to the fish ladders. Um, one of the community groups is most vocal about us not doing any out there for the flooding. I mentioned that as a part of our habitat analysis, we were going to take a look and see what could be done. So that if we need to do things as offset mitigation for the work that we're doing on the levee, we have an idea of what can be offered up in the fish ladders and those dams. Are ones that in my mind are the first thing I would want to look at. Okay, um, the comment was, you don't need to worry about those because we have volunteers that clean the debris out of the fish ladders on a regular basis. That's old school. The current method of handling these types of issues is to put in a boulder cobble riffle, and it works naturally. And it's, it's an extended stretch of the stream that is rebuilt, that has boulders, cobbles, and allows fish to go through. Yes, when they're in the system and they do it naturally and no human needs to go out there and touch the fish, interact with the fish or anything else. And it doesn't, once you build it. Um, you're pretty much hands off. When you build a dam structure with a fish ladder. That has to be permitted by Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and you own it and all the problems associated with it for life. Period, done. You never get away from it, and I don't want to build any like that for the city of Lakewood. So. What I'd like to do is now just kind of, let's see if we can thumb through this. I'm not going to go into. Much of this, just remind, remind you that we did this to look and see if there were solutions to the problem. Um, we have the hundred-year floodplain, which is different than what the FEMA model shows, and that's why we're, we're looking to solve the problem here. We, we involved the community, we looked at affordability, we looked at the implementation and environmental benefits, all the different options. And we came down to these four do nothing, which is a viable solution. But there are consequences to that. I know that recently someone called it a poison pill. It is not that. It is me being straight up with you, say, it is a viable option. To not do anything, understand there are consequences to that. Besides, if we move forward with any solution to get federal funding, we have to have a do nothing alternative evaluated so we can show them why it's valuable.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You don't need to see me, um, these are the estimated costs. For each one of them, and the last time we discussed this. I said that the recommendation based on the cost benefit and what we were going to get out of it would be if we do something, do the levee. That's about a mile and it goes between Bridgeport and the railroad tracks. The exact location is yet to be determined, but it gives us the uh best bang for the buck, and this is the levy alternative. There will be some additional work we have to do downstream with permission of the private property owners to make it work. The levy in the color now, hang on a second, okay. So for those at home, they won't see the, the pointer, but for those of you around the table, you can see the pointer. This is where the major levy is going to be between Bridgeport. And the railroad tracks slash where JBLM discharges. And I shouldn't call it JBLM, where the creek comes into the city limits. Okay, and then we have some points downstream that we need to talk about between Bridgeport and I five. There's improvements in there we would want to protect. There's an area here that's undeveloped land, a bit of a ravine. We would want to work to determine whether that has value enough. Um, to both the property owner and to the city to put a levy in there or let portion of that flood as it is. And then we have areas downstream where we will need to do additional. Ground truthing to say where we would need to do some form of a protective measure. Any questions on this graphic? I see you're all looking at it intently.
I have a couple of questions on the background when we get a chance, but yeah.
So this is just a more of a zoom in. This is, this is a conceptual idea where a levy could go, and yes, there is an apartment complex. That's on the backside, the wrong side of the levy, but the modeling shows that that actually doesn't get flooded. But the road would, so we would need to work carefully to identify how we can build something right here on Forty-seventh Street. That um could allow us to shut it off when the flooding is, is predicted to be coming down. It's complicated here.
Is there an open or closed culvert under I five? I don't, I just don't recall.
Under I five right here, these are box culverts. Right in here, is that what you're asking?
From the upper left.
So I five.
Yep.
And then uh Pac Highway.
I was just looking over the product where the, the stream is actually flowing. I just haven't looked down there, but there is some sort of a box culvert.
Yeah, there's, there's culverts underneath Bridgeport and box culverts under I five and box culverts under um. Pac Highway. Now, I have not physically looked at these to confirm they're box culverts, but they are culverts. So the difference from an engineering perspective is one's rectangular in shape, the other one is circular in shape, okay? It's important to engineers. Um, also important to fish because. You want to ensure fish passage.
What would be? I guess, this is generally north, upper right-hand corner. There's a, the huge. The tax federal property that is underwater. It has the pump across the. Uh, 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 across to uh or from Bridgeport, I mean, from uh.
Pac Highway.
Pac Highway over.
Yes.
How does that integrate with this or at all?
So. What you're alluding to or speaking to is when Pac Highway was originally built, it was a state road. It was being basically built for the military to go to the port. Um, and then when Pierce County ended up with Pac Highway, there's a pump station. There's a pump station right around the Forty-seventh Street um north. And east of, of. The Forty-seventh Street crossing and probably the best way to put it is right across from Sound Transit. It is the upper right-hand corner. I'm trying to make the, this point at it, but as soon as it hits that corner, it just doesn't like me. So anyways, when you, when you look at the Sound Transit station, if you're going towards five twelve, and you see the Sound Transit on the right. You see this little strange concrete um building on the right. That's actually a pump station, and it takes a runoff off Pac Highway, and it takes it across and it runs underneath I five. It actually picks up some I five drainage that also goes to that corner up there, that parcel. That's an infiltration facility. In this scenario, that would be able to continue to function. In the do nothing scenario, well, it, it can't get any water in there. Because it's ten feet, this, this is predicted to have ten foot of depth in that hole. And so um we'd have to really look at that pump station, see if it's got enough. Ability to pump against that kind of a hydraulic head, so we may have even more problems on Pac Highway than what this is currently predicting. The modeling that we've done did not get into that level of detail. That's kind of the next things we need to do. So there's a whole bunch of questions that we would need to um answer. Where the drainage fully goes, how we can make sure that it operates properly with a levy in place.
So is that pump station owned by the state?
No, it's owned by the city of Lakewood. When Pierce County, when we incorporated. We took over everything. The state had transferred it to Pierce County because they gave up by legislator legislative direction. Even state roads running through cities, the cities have the obligation unless you're a community over a certain size, which is really small, and we're not, and Pierce County's not. So that got transferred over to the county, and then when uh Lakewood incorporated ninety-six, we got everything lock, stock and barrel, so that pump station is actually ours. And we checked that on a fairly regular basis. And we kicked the homeless out. And then uh we just have flow hawks go in there and make sure that the pumps are, are functional and everything's good. Okay.
I had a quick question as well. Uh, are there a couple of detention ponds along Clover Creek in that apartment complex?
Uh, there is a detention pond right on this one apartment complex right here.
Okay.
And in fact, in ninety-five, ninety-six, that pond got overwhelmed, and that was actually why this original two thousand and three study was completed. In order to analyze what can be done to protect it. At that time, their recommendation was to build a, um, a, a berm that was a foot and a half tall. And five feet were on the top, like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Never happened. So. Thank you. Again, to go back to, it's a levy of some form.
Can I, can I ask a similar question before we move on? So the nineteen seventy-six study that you referenced, what was predicted in that study for flooding? That prompted their recommendation for levees, do you recall?
You know, I just started looking at that in detail today, so I can't answer that for you. I will tell you this, that from seventy-six to today. The, the tools and techniques we use for analyzing floods and predicting the flows are radically different.
Yeah.
And much better today.
Right.
I also want to point out that. Perhaps this is a good time to say that. When we analyze things recently.
Mm-hmm.
We used the FEMA model, we used the flood model. Only thing that we did was we used a different flow routing model over land and more detailed topography.
Mm-hmm.
So people who say, well, I don't believe your results. I lived here fifty years, I, I don't believe it's going to flood. My answer is, my question is, do you believe the, the FEMA floodplain that was correct in twenty seventeen? We're using the same model, we're using the same flows. We haven't made any changes. In fact, one could criticize us because there's a lot more development upstream. We actually could be higher.
That was going to be my second question, you know, post nineteen seventy-six study. Forty-seven years. How many significant flooding events have there been?
A lot. Now, in Lakewood.
Right, in Lakewood.
Right in here? No.
Right.
But remember that this is a predictive model. And it's a one percent probability.
Mm-hmm.
Now. You can absolutely, we can all roll the dice, we do every time, many things we do in life and say, well, one percent's not that much probability.
Mm-hmm.
But what I ask you to think about is the risk and the consequence. So the risk is low, but the consequence is high. The analysis that we did showed that when the flood comes through in twenty twenty-two dollars. It's a hundred and twenty million dollar impact. I think it may actually be higher than that, to be honest with you. Because all of our roads are shut down, businesses are flooded. And homes will, people not be able to get out of their homes. We will have I five traffic. I won't predict, I'm going to get, look into my crystal ball and predict that people are going to jump off of I five at five twelve. They can jump off of I five a gravitate drive. Now. They're going to love our new roundabouts because they're going to get to a certain point, but not be able to go very far. So now we've got all of our traffic signals are still in place.
Right.
Because we can't build them everywhere. Because we can't build them everywhere. Problem is, is that I think that we're gonna be impacted heavily as a community. That's a risk that we can take. Mr. Anderson.
Just, just a comment from personal observation, because now I'm really old and I haven't forgot everything yet. I've watched Clover Creek go up and down back in the Brookdale area since I was in high school in South Hill. In the late sixties, early seventies. And. Then as a member of the then Spanaway Old Plain Fire Department, we had to change our routes. I think seventy seven, seventy eight because of flooding in Frederickson. And flooding, which is in that watershed and drains into Clover Creek and. There was literally a lake out there seasonally for a period of time. And uh I don't know what they've done for diversion, that they they cured that with the development of Frederickson industrial area. Or at least they, they moved it somewhere, but. You could, you could get through, so you had to go around.
So in nineteen ninety seven, when I worked for Pierce County, we had all these floods. We survived it. In January, I got a call from somebody who was frantic. In just upstream, up the, up the plateau from Frederickson Industrial Park, saying we've got all this flooding. In their, in their subdivision. I said, what are you talking about? It's been, it's been sunny for two weeks. So I thought, oh, well, you know, I'll go out for a field trip. I went out there and I can't find my videotape on my old camera. Across this one road was a farmer's field. It was a river flowing through it practically. So I went up and knocked on the door and the gentleman who lived there had lived there for eighty years. He said, I told him when they built those homes there that they was gonna flood. You could literally walk out into his pasture and walk this direction of his pasture and you reach the point where all the soil, the grass was. Dimpled like an inverted golf ball and they all had a fountain coming out of it. And it built up until it flowed under the creek, under the, under the road. And there's a big culvert there for some reason. It flowed through that subdivision, went back in the ground and showed up in Frederickson, that main road that parallels that bluff, had three feet of water of it. Over it and it was flooded and this before a lot of the development occurred out there now. And it flooded for a month. We had it shut down for a month. It was literally. A, he said, there's a river. He'd hand dug his well thirty five feet deep. He started getting kind of freaked out because he could hear the water running under his feet. We tracked that water from Frederickson to Spanaway Lake. From Spanaway down Maury Creek, down into American Lake and then out through Spawshite Creek to the south. So the point of it is, is that. We don't know fully what's going on on the groundwater table. It's hard to predict. Surface water is complicated enough. But when people tell me that. I've lived here thirty five and I've had people tell me that and I've never had flooding and they have six feet of water in their house. Because they're in the South Hill Puyallup and they live in a series of potholes that you cannot tell you're in it until you look at topographic mapping. And then ninety six, ninety seven, snow, snow event. Filled the first one, it flowed overland to the next one, it flowed overland to the next one and it flooded out. Lots of homes.
I saw some of those, for sure.
So we had to, we just gotta be thoughtful about that.
Water likes gravity.
Water flows downhill. That's why I live on top of a hill. So this was just a, a, a funding vision, state allocation, public, private grants. Uh in order to move this thing forward, we're gonna have to do something. Funding strategy presented, you'll notice that a lot of it talks about figuring out if we can get the state. AKA the state legislature, AKA the State Department of Transportation to support this. Because the solution to solve their flooding alone is eighteen million dollars. If the ultimate solution is twenty million dollars. Let's see if we can get them to cop, cough up eighteen million and we're a long ways there. And then we have an outreach and engagement approach. And thi- this is in a technical refinement and notice this is all moving towards a twenty twenty five state budget cycle. This is optimistic. I think realistically, we're probably looking at twenty twenty seven. Um it would not surprise me if in order to get to the point where we're ready to build something out there, we're looking at a five to ten year window.
So any options, Paul, or Mr. Busich, if you would. Number two was something akin to. Removing or correcting upland impediments to enhance flow as opposed to the two levy options?
Correct, that is the channel enhancement option.
Right.
Because. Well, if we can do it, if we can keep the creek in its channel. By doing certain select improvements and enhancements, that'd be a good way to go. The problem is, is that the analysis showed that if you do that. You're just, you're gonna stop the water from flowing across I five, but everything between I five and the creek is still flooded. So we're not really getting um the best bang for the buck and it's actually a more expensive option. Um than if you build a levy. That's predicted.
Does it enhance the salmon capability to have better flow? I I don't know. I'm I'm.
So any project that we build out there, I anticipate that we're gonna be doing some form of work on the stream. Especially if we're gonna go downstream on, onto the private property and look to do, whether it be a mini um. Uh dyke levy or whether it's gonna be a concrete flood wall, you know, two or three feet tall, but we're gonna be within the, the. What's considered as the habitat zone of the creek, if you will. Okay, so. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, let's solve the problem. That's why I was saying earlier is that if we, if we can show that by taking out those three concrete structures in the fish ladder. That we can actually open it up to fish when they come back in, that'd be a great win for us. For a relatively, a- about the same cost actually is for a levy. And we solve a lot more problems. That'd be great. One of the comments I know that you've heard is, is that we should protect this as a flood plain. This is not what I consider an active flood plain. That's being used like the Puyallup River. Puyallup River and the major rivers, they have active flood plains that they flood on a regular basis. And so what they've done in the past is they go and they build these big uh levies to try and protect that for farming or other things. That's not a real cost effective way to do it. And they figured that out. What we're doing here is we're trying to protect land that, that has a predicted flood frequency. A portion of it floods on a twenty five year, much smaller, a fifty year, more, and the hundred year is what really um impacts the community of Lakewood significantly. So are we really losing much by protecting that land? That's my question. There's not a lot of habitat out there, definitely no fish habitat out there. Where we're proposing to put potentially a levy, we would preserve the um. Little stormwater ponds slash fish rearing pond, plus that other pond there. Um so we'd be looking to preserve those and actually make a better connection to the creek. And have rehabilitate those so they have better habitat functions than what they do right now. That one pond right across the Springbrook Park. Um it's basically used for homeless to throw trash in there. They have to be hauled out. It's got invasive species all around it. It's not very deep. The connection to the creek's not good. Any fish that migrate into there during high flows, it won't be able to find their way out. And they're gonna cook in there because the water gets too hot. So that's one of the areas that we would look to enhance and improve that as part of any project. So that we would get the credit for that. It's it's, the other thing is those improvements that we do. We're building a levy system for a one percent probability storm. You can put a walking path on it. You can make it a community asset to it. You just can't plant trees on it while you're using your FEMA cert and Corps of Engineers certification. But you can make it a, a community amenity and then the other area on the other side, make it a community amenity too. Everything we do that we would do within the stream corridor itself for habitat. It doesn't, it, that's not benefiting uh once every hundred years. That's benefiting all the time. So that's one of the things I try to share with people is, is that if we, if we do go forward and build something out here, those habitat improvements we do. They're twenty four, seven, three sixty five. They're not once in a hundred years.
With that process, okay.
So. It is three minutes to twelve, uh to ten. You wanted to end at ten. I'm done. And I'm.
Fabulous.
Able to answer any questions you may have on it. I know this is a complex.
Very, very complex. Well, I will circle the wagons and go around and see uh from my right to left if we have any comments or questions, Mr. Brandstetter.
If uh we're at a point of where in order to move forward, we're into a uh. Exploring funding phase uh. Are we gonna be able to do that in Housewood staff? Or are we gonna need a? Some consultant or something to. Help us uh with grants and communicating with the feds and state.
Well, I, I, to answer that question, I think it's gonna be a little bit of a blend of both. And before I forget, if the council decides they do want to move forward to evaluate the levy further. Then what I'm proposed to do is I'm gonna bring a motion to you at the next council state, studies, council session. And it will basically say the council is interested in advancing this to identify funding sources, partners um for solutions. With a long term benefit to the community of X, Y, Z. Now, we will do what we can with, with our own staff, but realistically. Over the long term, we're gonna need consultants to help us out with this.
Yeah, this is a big lift just for internal staff. It's already been a, a big lift. Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter. Mr. Anderson, anything further?
Yeah, I just note that we're uh. A little bit ahead of this at the Pierce County level with removal of the Chambers Bay Dam. And building the, the funding coalition and partnerships is the, the next big step and. And there's, it's. It's a matrix of funding. It's not a stream.
Yep.
And so that, there is some complexity to that, but uh I think there are some funding sources available. That we might have to wait a half dozen years to compile them, but I think, think we could get there.
So it's a bevy for the levy.
No levy for the levy.
Exactly. Councilmember Bell, any thoughts?
I mean.
I am ultimately gonna ask the question, do we have consensus to go forward to the recommendation?
So I do like the recommendation of advancing it to find out the funding sources. And what the potential would be and how we could possibly move forward. But again, you said this is just very exploratory. We're finding out the funding sources, correct?
Well, in the.
Or where?
In, in the report, the final report, we listed all, a whole bunch of potential funding sources.
I saw, you saw that, but we would go deeper and see what could come from that possibly.
Not just going deeper, but we would start conversations with higher ups in the State Department of Transportation to help and convince them that. Not flooding I five is a good idea. And that they should now work with us in partnership to identify funding, that they may have opportunities to go after federal. Or state funding that we as a city of Lakewood would not have. We would be talking with Pierce County Surface Water Management. We'd be talking to Flight Control Zone District. We'd be talking to anybody and everybody that we can, even if they don't have a funding source, then they would be partners with us. On moving forward in, in support. I would also want to start doing some more public outreach, talking to the individual property owners to see if we have any issues with them. Um and getting permission to do some surveys, some actual field survey work, not just using the topographic mapping that we have. To confirm the, the, the size and the cost estimate. With any kind of a project like this. You have a planning of a cost assessment that has a plus or minus. So plus or minus on these is, you know, seventeen million to thirty million. That's a big range.
Yep.
Um fifteen million to thirty million. So I would want to kind of refine that. And then once we do that, come back and have the next conversation with the council about, here's where we are, here's what we found. Here's what you recommend the next steps would be.
Well, there's obviously a range of internal resources that are going to be expanded to get to that point, right?
Yes.
So we'll probably need to know what. Budgetary ask down the road for next biennium might be, but I know that you're not anywhere near that yet. Deputy Mayor Moss, any thoughts?
One of the comments you made was that the current recommendations. For dams and you would suggest more of a levy in that area. Do you have the authority to do that?
So um there's two things going on. There are concrete dams with fish ladders in the stream itself. They are privately owned. That's separate from the, from the levy that is tied together in that. I would want to know what's the habitat conditions within the creek itself. What are the areas we would, we would need to build something to protect it? And then what would be our options that we could offer up to the regulatory agencies? When we're talking about doing work in the stream or adjacent to the stream. Now, it doesn't mean that we would necessarily, I can state right now that those dams that are in there would be removed. They are privately owned. Private property owners would need to agree to that and we would need to get fish and wildlife to agree to it. And I don't think that either the, the quality driver or the private would object to that whatsoever because they don't like impediments to fish passage. So it's, they play together as far as the two concepts, but they are not a hundred percent linked. In other words, if we can do things that allow us to get the levy. But property owners don't want us to remove the dams and we can provide enough uplift on the environmental side. The regulatory agencies can buy into that, we can still move forward.
Thank you.
To help, thank you.
The uh, the dams and fish ladders you're referring to, are those?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
That the dams and fish ladders you're referring to are those uh right extragradly lake drive and that overpass right there?
The ones um, the ways I remember, they're upstream of Gravely Drive. It might be one downstream. I have not physically walked it myself.
Okay, I think I remember seeing those a number of years ago.
Okay.
And my other question is, is there anything special and about the right? The eastern terminus of the proposed levy where it is at the end of Lakewood or would we want? Whoever owns the property used of us being JBLM or the railroad or someone to continue that levy beyond that.
There actually is something special about it. In order to be a certified levy, it has to tie into natural, natural high, high ground. And that's where we've determined it would. That's part of the reason why it's set back on that side away, further away from the stream. Because there's a parcel right there about five acres that um is a hole. And so we can't actually, we want to kind of run around the, the end of that and stay on the high ground and tie it into high ground, which the railroad track is pretty much. Close to it right there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome. I think that gives you a sense of consensus. Sounds like we're. Uh on board to move forward to the next phase, next step, next inquiry level. Uh so thank you for your hard work.
I'll prepare a document for one of the upcoming council meetings for you to. Review. It'll be a motion, so it won't be a resolution or an ordinance. It'll be a motion in support of continued investigation and evaluation.
Right. It doesn't necessarily commit us to anything yet.
It does not.
Yeah.
It does not. It does commit us to doing more investigation to see.
Exactly. I think that's important for the public to know that we're not, you know, just blowing through this without adequate and thorough conversation and thought.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep. So those items scheduled for the June five regular city council meeting are listed on your agenda packet for tonight. I won't uh review those in detail because you can read them there. So we'll turn to reports by. Our illustrious city manager, Mr. Coughfield. He's still illustrious at ten o'clock at night nonetheless.
I have a feel, I have a feeling, Mayor, I'd be more illustrious if I was done at. Ten hundred and thirty seconds.
Let's see. The only deal is I have to pick my wife up at the airport at eleven. So that's fun. I'm just, just saying. So if, if you get me late to pick her up.
You know, Mayor.
You're picking her up.
This is what I'm gonna do for your wife. I am just gonna touch on a couple of items.
Yeah.
But again, I want to be clear, Mayor and Council.
If I'm late, it's okay. I'm gonna say, hey, Coughfield kept us late tonight. Sorry that you had to stay there with all the vagrants by the bus stop. But, you know, talk to Mr. Coughfield about that.
The more you keep talking, Mayor, the later you're gonna be.
I'm still gonna blame you.
I know. That's okay. Yugoslavia broke up in nineteen ninety two. I still get blamed for that. Um hey, real quick, I just wanted to let you know, we had a fantastic meeting with representatives of Camp Murray last week in, in the city. And long story short, um they're gonna go back um to General Doherty and recommend that we work together to partner to make improvements down there. Including pedestrian and bicycle. Um I did volunteer that the city would uh finance the master planning process. So once they, once they come back, hopefully again with an affirmative from, from the two star. Um I'll be back in front of you with a, a scope of work, hopefully within the next couple of months. Um they also suggested to ensure the, you know, the long term, this is gonna be a multi-year project. Um that rather than the city in Camp Murray having to go back and forth, particularly if you have staff turnover, changes in command and stuff like that. That they recommended an MOU memorializing, you know, what we're gonna do here. So we're gonna work on that as well. So, but again, um some great news there. Um I know a number of you were attending the AWC conference um in Spokane next month. And so two items there. One is they have a business meeting on Thursday, Thursday afternoon. I think it's about three or four in the afternoon. And uh so three voting delegates are needed. So Mayor and Council, if you want to let myself and the clerk know, if you'd like to do that. Just let us know and we can get you registered. Um and then also in this part of the.
Um, and then also in this part of the opening ceremony on Wednesday at noon, there is a parade of flags and uh. So we have our city flag. So um, if the council is so inclined, you can participate in that, but then we'll need a flag bearer. So if there's somebody who's attending, I'd like to do that. I know Councilmember Branstadter in the past is, is, has actually done that on behalf of Lakewood. Um, and then as far as your calendar goes this week, um, Clover Park High School is going to be hosting their annual Arlington Project and I. No, I know a number of you will be attending that. Um, um, a week from tonight is Memorial, a week from today, rather, is Memorial Day and there's two events going on of, of, of regional importance. The first is that JBLM is having their Memorial Day Ceremony. And I know if you have an opportunity to attend, you've all been invited. And then the um. Um, there is also us, um, an event at the Mountain View Funeral Home and Memorial Park as, 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 as well. And then um, next Tuesday, uh, the Puget Sound Regional Council is going to be hosting their general assembly in person in downtown Seattle. First time since two thousand nineteen. So if you'd like to make the trek up there to attend that, it's from. Um, eleven AM, I believe. No, yeah. Ten AM to one PM, I think, or one, it's either ten to one or eleven to one. Um, and then uh, also next week on Wednesday in the morning at seven thirty, Communities and Schools is having their thirtieth anniversary breakfast. And I know a number of you have signed up, but if you haven't and you have an interest, you can do it yourself or let us know and we can register for you. I know the city council has always had a strong showing at that event. And then that evening. Um, the eighth annual celebration of art reception will be at St. Clair Hospital to honor the Lake. Uh, high school students. And I know they brought that back last year in person, so um, that'll be occurring as well. And that kicks off at five thirty. Um, and then Mayor, I just want to point out on both, on both of those events, there'll be snacks in the morning and there'll be snacks in the evening. I just wanted to keep it brief on behalf of your wife. So I want credit for that, Mayor.
That's it?
That's it.
Ow, okay.
Everything else will follow up, but a different mechanism.
Well, just to quickly address your AWC question, I will be there uh, that afternoon. Do the business meeting for sure.
Okay.
I can be one of the votes. I don't know who else is going to that? Deputy Mayor Moss, are you going? So we've got three of us. Is that enough?
Okay. And then Councilmember, are you going?
Oh, four of us. Okay, so we should have enough for the vote. Are you all staying at least till the four or five o'clock-ish Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I think we're good. My flight doesn't leave till seven-ish.
And then Mayor, I'm sorry, um, Councilmember Branstadter, do you want to be the flag bearer?
I can.
Oh, you want to do it?
Yeah.
All right.
Sure.
All right.
What day is that?
It's on uh, Tuesday. It's on Wednesday at noon at lunch.
Oh, I'll be there. So I guess we can do, it's in Spokane, the AWC conference. Yep.
Okay, all right.
Great.
I, I don't know. I haven't heard back, but we'll, um, we'll close that loop for then. Actually, thank you for the reminder on that.
Well, very good. Council comments. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, I have no additional comments tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Branstadter.
Uh, the, the only thing I would point out is that I attended the uh, Community Services Advisory Board. They, they did a review of the twenty one, twenty two uh, contracts. And significantly, there were four contracts. That where money was provided to organizations to run food banks. And three of the four were not able to meet their goals in terms of numbers of people uh, assisted in. Being able to uh. Go, go through and, and, and do that. And so that, that committee is going to really look at. What, what kind of criteria do they really want to see in a proposal for food? Um, that is actually a god reachable outcomes.
Very good. Councilmember Bell.
I am good. Thank you, Mayor.
Wow. Councilmember Anderson.
I will be gone, well, next is the fifth Monday. Next meeting is June fifth. I'll be somewhere else for my birthday week. And I will be out the twentieth. Uh, to uh, up June to go to a Association Defense Communities Board meeting.
Very well. Deputy Mayor Moss.
That was fast.
Yeah. You guys don't want to get me in trouble, apparently.
Right. We're trying to get you to get, we want you to stay married. Yeah, I attended the Airman Leadership School on um, Thursday night. Uh, as usual, it was um, a good turnout. It was really interesting. It was ne- nice to see the young men that were. Uh, graduating. They, each grad, each class chooses a project that they work on and that's what they do throughout the process. The whole process and they chose the Food Bank in Puyallup. They talked about the number of. People that they served and food that they provided for that. So that was, it was, that was their project and that's what they do. And now they do all the branches of the service in one school. So this, this time they had the Army, Air Force and Coast Guard.
Oh, great.
Last time it was the uh, the Navy was included, so. Yes, so uh, I also attended the Clover Park. Uh, Clover Park Technical College Scholarship Dinner on. Friday, Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday. They all running together, which was, it was really good. It was uh, a nice event. Uh. I enjoyed. The mayor did a good presentation. It was different, but it was good.
My presentation or?
No, no, the event itself. That's, that's it.
No, thank you very much. So on Thursday, uh, Mr. Boki and I attended the Pierce County Regional Council Meeting. We were uh, burst on. An action item that involved some housing targets with this new sort of hapt. Uh. Formula developed by the Department of Commerce. Long story short. Uh, we received some good input on how to approach the meeting from Tiffany Spear and. And the city manager. And so we went and, you know, we're able to strongarm them to adopt. Uh, the, the targets, wh- which is not perfect, but it actually is a lesser number for Lakewood. Uh, even though we think the use of that particular formula is kind of, I don't want to use the word hogwash, but I'll say hogwash. Uh, but it is what it is and we're going to have to live with a little bit. But again, it's a planning exercise. Uh, more to follow. The Clover Park Technical College Foundation Scholarship Foundation event on Saturday was pretty well attended. Uh, Mr. Branstadter, Deputy Mayor Moss and I were there on behalf of the city. Uh, it was to honor student success and the, the wonderful thing about the entire program was. The hammering home of the recognition that uh, the business community and the city. And its educational institutions are inextricably linked. And they were very laudatory about the support of community that the city of Lakewood has for Clover Park Technical College. And my message in my keynote speech was that we need them because uh, strong communities require a thriving business community. Thriving business communities need a sustained and educated workforce because every time you go abroad. Or you go locally to do economic development activities, I went to the Farmer Air Show and the Paris Air Show a couple of years back. On behalf of the Economic Development Board. And the consistent question was, tell us about your workforce. Will you have the sustained employment base to do the work that we could bring to your community? And so that is a message that Clover Park is working to help and sustain the jobs of the future. So it is a good win-win partnership. Between the community and our technical and community colleges, which as we all know, is part and parcel to our city vision and goals that we set back in twenty twenty one. So it was a good event. Um, just to comment on tonight's activities and agenda, I thought it was all really well done. I enjoyed. Uh, the student presentation on the urban forestry program. And the state legislative report. I'm sure council is going to be interested in sitting down when appropriate. To help focus and develop our legislative agenda and action items that we hope to accomplish. For the next biennium there, especially the capital budget period in twenty twenty five. And then finally, given the urban forestry program work, do we have some consensus to direct? Give direction rather to the city manager that that's something we want to proceed with. And to have the manager be able to come back and provide some funding recommendations for staff support because I think he's going to need to know that. I would say, I think we want to do it.
I, 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 I think so, but I think we also would like to for. The next biennium, within the next biennium, create a separate advisory group to help whoever is hired. Who uh, plan and coordinate that program.
But the consensus to have a program, number one is what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Number two, uh, consensus to ensure that there's adequate staff support, which means perhaps a new FTE in part.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm really hesitant to embark on spending money, given. The economic conditions, inflation, uh, salary raises, uh, creating an additional bureaucracy that. Will not go away in one cycle is something I want to do with great deliberation.
Absolutely. But I think we can give him some direction to come back with some suggestive proposals on how to properly staff it. It could be a part-time, it could be a contract. Or it could be a volunteer board with some. Unsuspecting person who could, gets tabbed for doing the work. Like Councilmember Bell. We have consensus to move forward with the program. I want to make sure that he feels that he's got the consensus for that.
Yeah, yes, Mayor. I mean, this is a, this is part of your council goals anyways. And so um, what we'll be doing is we'll be evaluating. You know, options and alternatives. And right now, my goal and objective is to bring that forward as part of the mid biennial budget review. I, I do want to be clear. I do want to echo Councilmember Anderson's concerns from a financial standpoint. I don't want to overpromise. At the same time, I recognize that this is important. And so we'll be looking at ways on how we can do this. And whether or not we can begin to do it in two thousand twenty four is to be seen. But again, as we look out into the bi- biennium beyond that. For twenty five and twenty six, I think for sure. So.
Well, yeah, I agree. I know. See a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar.
But I also want to be clear, I'd also like to be clear, Mayor, that, you know, how we do it, I think is still to be determined, that, you know.
Right.
You know.
We may need to chew on that in another study.
That's correct. You know, uh, when you, because when you start talking about staff, really it comes down to what are your priorities? And so if this is a priority for the council, we have resources to be able to do this right now. It's just, but then there's other things that we won't be able to do. So therein lies the, the issue, right?
Yep, absolutely. More to follow then. But sounds, it was a good program and. Good objective, obviously, to move the ball forward. Okay, unless there's anything further, any?